Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our choices, or excuse me, by our actions. We provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined, and we invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance the learning for our students.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, item five is the approval of the agenda. I would like to make a little statement here and request an amendment to the agenda. This afternoon, we, or I late this morning, learned that one of the issues at our, the city, with the city of, I'm just going to do a little reading here, the city of Stillwater had alerted us that they cannot handle, they cannot do Monday nights here at, or we cannot do Monday nights at City Hall. After reflecting on the implication of this fact, I feel that it is precipitous to force a vote tonight. I think it would force a hand for my fellow board members, and I don't want to do that. So I would ask that we amend the agenda this evening, amend that action item, add it to next week's, our next meeting's agenda, which is moving also, which is discussing an action item of moving our school board meetings to Oak Park. I consulted with our vice chair, Sarah Stivlin, on this, and would like to, again, amend that motion, take it off the table, let until the next board meeting. We can still have our discussion tonight, so I would like the board to consider keeping that on the agenda, so we can have the full discussion. I feel that if we give our board more time to consider this, we'll have a more informed vote. It will be more fair. So with that, and finally, I will say, we must however make two votes next week because we have the truth and taxation deadline coming up. So we do have to have that action item next week. It is not necessary or required tonight. Any questions? And I would move for a second.
Just a question.
Yep.
So actually, what you're asking for is under reports that C be stricken?
Nope.
Until the next meeting?
So under the action item 11A, that will be taken off the agenda tonight, and we will retain the discussion, the reports.
Gotcha.
Based on the information that we heard today, I thought it was kind of last minute, and I didn't want to do that to my fellow board members.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Did Mike want to make a change as well?
Once we get to consent.
Oh, sorry.
Yep, no problem.
I just.
That's okay. Alright, so we're moving on now to item six, which is superintendent's report. Superintendent Ponchelli.
Wonderful, thank you. The opening week of school was full of new opportunities to connect with our students and families. I can honestly say that it has been one of the most positive and exciting back-to-school experiences of my career, and I've heard similar comments from many of our teachers and staff. Our pre-K classrooms are buzzing with energetic new little learners. Our K-5 students and families were ready and eager to get back to school, thanks to our Ready, Set, Go conferences. One parent said that they could hardly hold their child back, who had a conference on Monday, and just didn't think she needed to wait until Wednesday to get back to school. Our Spanish immersion program expanded this year to first grade. Elementary classrooms were full of new reading materials for our students. Our middle school participated in Web, Where Everyone Belongs, and the high school had a wonderful welcome for our ninth grade students with our Link Crew. It truly has been an incredible start to the new year, and we're excited to share more about all of this with you later in tonight's presentations. Second thing I'd like to talk about is transportation. As you know, last year was a difficult year for most districts in Minnesota and across the nation. Because our economy is great, it's hard to get school bus drivers. And so this year, it's been a very different story for us in Stillwater. I've not heard of an issue around busing this year, or buses not showing up. Our first day of school report will give you the specifics, but I wanted to take extra time to thank Director Hoheisel, Ben Davis, and Amanda Whelan for their work with Minnesota Central, our bus transportation company, to provide a much smoother experience for our students and families this year. There was a lot of work that went into this over the year and this summer to make that possible, so thank you very much to that team. Dr. Josiah Hill, Chris Akkeister, and I, we're all able to attend the annual Welcome Back Luncheon for our retired educators. Two of our board members join me there. Director Hovland, next to me, and Director Hepner were there. It's always a pleasure to visit with our retired staff members in the fall. After we gave a state-of-the-district presentation, we were able to talk to them about their initiative to fundraise for safety needs within our district. As you know, across the nation, school districts are looking very carefully at what they can do to improve school safety. It's very important to us, and so we appreciate their continued support and participation in Stillwater Public Schools, and look forward to them and working with fundraising efforts to raise money for safety for our schools. Stillwater administrators sponsored a table at the annual United Way of Washington County East Leadership Breakfast on Tuesday morning. Andy Fields, our middle school principal at Oakland, who is here in the audience with us, was the featured speaker and shared a humorous, heartwarming story of his journey to support the mental health needs of our district and students. We're so appreciative of the partnership and the support that we receive for our students through United Way. And then finally, we have joining us this evening our two new student reps who you met last spring, and we have Nikhil and Abdul here, who are going to be sharing some information with us about the beginning of the school year for them. So I'll turn it over to Nikhil.
I'll actually be starting. And before we give the student report, I would like to say I have a little speech that I prepared for you guys. So I'd like to first thank the students of Stillwater Area High School for allowing us the opportunity to represent you in these meetings and act as a student voice to get your needs across. During April of last year, we had elections for student council presidents, a position held in high regard not just in our school, but across the nation for its responsibility for coordinating the activities of the student council, and for directing and overseeing the publicizing of affairs of the student body. There were about four other very qualified individuals who ran for the presidency spots, and over 800 votes casted within our school. In a day's time, with nail-biting and lots of waiting in between, the votes were counted, and Nikhil and I were chosen to lead the school. Easily one of the greatest moments of our lives. With this responsibility bestowed upon us, we would like to first relieve any doubts of our ability to handle these positions. By also being the first African-American president of our school, we see it as our duty to break new grounds and show what we can accomplish. And there's no better way. There's no better way to do it than in these very seats that we are sitting on. We look forward to what we can accomplish, not just as a board, but as a community as well. Now I'll be moving on to the school reports. My name's Abdulaziz Muhammad, and I am one of the student body presidents at our high school. For today's announcement, we reached out to the student body. We wanted to hear their thoughts on things that matter to them. As you well know, student voice is an integral part to our working school and community, and as such should be taken into high account. Our student voice is diverse, whether it be in their interests, concerns, or desires. A new cellphone policy was implemented this school year in response to the addictiveness and distraction it causes to students' learning. Studies have also shown that this same addiction contributes to feelings of anxiety and depression over time. This policy entails that cellphones must be turned off during school class hours, including flex time, and not be present on our students' person in the classroom during class hours or flex time. It should be stored in a student's locker, backpack, or predetermined location in the classroom. If a teacher or admin allows the student to pull out their phones during school hours, they are allowed to do so. Naturally, backlash is to occur with such a polarizing topic as phone use. One common thing addressed among the students is the cellphone use in flex time. Flex time was built on the simple ideal that it was a flexible time for students to get things done related to their individual passions, post-secondary goals, and a sense of belonging in the school. This is sort of gray area for students in terms of their right of using a phone during this timeframe. We are looking forward to having talks on the issues in the future. One other concern for the students at this time is the new door-opening system enacted before school every day. It was created as a measure to, extra measure to ensure students are safe. However, students have found problems in getting into the school in the morning as student-led clubs and sectionals start at 7:05. We have been working with administration to alleviate these problems with the recent addition of a school monitor for the music wing, and the option for club leaders to send names to the office to get into schools early. We look forward to having more talks with administration and making the school a better place. Thank you.
Nikhil?
Hi, my name's Nikhil Kumaran, a co-president of student council, and very excited to be a student representative on the school board. I'll be giving the update on academics, activities, and events throughout the high school. Our school has started off on a great foot. Link Crew and upperclassmen have been working really hard to introduce the new coming freshmen to help them get acclimated to the dangerous jungles known as high school. Starting on the academic side of things, students are now finally setting into a solid homework schedule, and are doing their best to stay on top of things. For example, a majority of seniors are currently studying as we speak for an AP Calc or physics exam. Clubs are beginning to start up around this time, and many students are giving love to the extracurriculars, such as the debate team. I'm personally on the debate team, and we're working on a, we're working on our first topic, wondering if we should repeal the Electoral College by public opinion. That's just a taste of what the debate team does on a daily basis. On Monday, September 17th, however, the high school will be conducting the academic lettering ceremony. This event is for 3.75 or, and higher weighted GPA. Both Abdul and I will be attending, and will be carrying on the tradition as student council presidents by speaking at the ceremony. Now moving on to activities and events. Tonight, at 7:00 PM, the boys soccer team will be facing Roseville at home. So far in the season, the team has been strong, and hopefully will continue to push towards state. Tomorrow night, the football team will be away at Roseville, playing at 7:00 PM as well. The student section will be very hyped up as usual, and dress-up theme will be a jersey out, where students will wear whatever sports jersey they can to support the ponies. As you all know, homecoming week, which is very important to the Stillwater community, is approaching fast, about two weeks to be exact. Student council has been working very hard over the past month to make sure this year is just as good, if not better, than last year. This week, student council will be organizing events such as Paint the Town Red, where local businesses can get their windows painted by not only student council members, but any other students that participate in the vast amount of clubs we have here at Stillwater Area High School. Lastly, a main focus for next week will be our homecoming dance. The dance will be on September 22nd, and should be a very fun Saturday night and a great way to celebrate to be a pony. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. I tell you what, my daughter Kate grew up with these two boys, so this is kind of personal for me, and we're so proud and excited. So, thank you. So Denise, you are up next. Introduction of new leadership team members.
Great, thank you. The school board approved the selection of three new administrators for the Stillwater schools. Anna Wilsack will serve as the principal for Anderson Elementary School. Gina Doe will serve as assistant principal at Stillwater Middle, and Caitlin Willis will take over as program administrator within the Student Support Services Program. And I'm going to ask the three of them to join us, and while they do, I'll read you a short snippet about each of them, so if the three of you would mind coming forward. Anna is a well-known member of the pony community, having worked as both a teacher and administrator in the district since 2011. She began her career as an elementary teacher in Brainerd and Edina before coming to Stillwater to teach sixth grade at Anderson Elementary. She served alongside Principal Nate Cox at Lily Lake and Oak Park Elementarys as an assistant principal during the 2016-17 school year, and most recently, her work includes student engagement coordinator at Oakland Middle School. Welcome, Anna. Gina Doe comes to us in Stillwater from the Mounds View Public Schools, where she's served as dean of students for the past several years. She's also worked in the Forest Lake Area School District as both a teacher and instructional coach, and for East Metro Integration District as a science teacher. Welcome, Gina. And Caitlin Willis will be providing leadership and support for the district's special education department, with a focus on the 18- to 21-year-old transition program and secondary programming. She has held a variety of teaching and leadership roles in the area of special education throughout her career. She most recently worked as a special education supervisor in the Anoka-Hennepin Schools, and has also worked in the St. Paul Public Schools and for the Northeast Metro 916 Intermediate School District. Welcome.
Would you mind, each of you, just saying a little something?
Absolutely.
No formal speech, but then if the board has questions?
Yes. Well, first of all, I just want to begin by saying I'm humbled and honored to be joining such an amazing team of leaders here in our district, and for me, returning to Anderson Elementary is like returning home. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be there in my new role, but I'm also here to say thank you, because the support that I have received as a new administrator has been unbelievable. Your support as a school board, the support of my colleagues, and my superintendent, I'm so appreciative, and I couldn't feel like we're in a better place as we start the year at Anderson. And when I think about all of this with my mom hat on, I can tell you, I have three ponies of my own. I have a ninth grader who has survived the jungle so far, and I have a seventh grader and a fourth grader as well, all at different schools. And their stories are so happy and positive, they can't stop talking about all of the great things that they're learning, and more than anything, how they are cared for. The care that they are receiving from their teachers, from all of the people who are in our school district, that's what makes my heart sing, and that's what gives me joy. And I'm just proud to be a part of the work that's being done, so, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight, and as a Stillwater resident and a pony mom myself, I have to say that this has been the best school year yet, and my son, the Ready, Set, Go conferences had him ready too. He wanted, I had to hold him back. And I had to hold myself back too, because I have been just loving being here. I feel so welcomed by the administrative staff and everybody here, and not all districts are like that, and so Stillwater's a really special place, and I want to thank you, and I'm excited to be part of Stillwater as we move forward.
So it's going to sound a little like a broken record, third time around, but again, I'm really grateful to be here. I too have a daughter at Rutherford in fifth grade, so I've been involved in the district as a mom since kindergarten, and I am so grateful and blessed and honored to be here, and also, again, amazing support, amazing leadership. I am showing up every day and learning, which totally jazzes me and makes me excited about my own personal and professional growth that I'm going to get by being a part of this magnificent district. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Alright, item eight is the open forum. Before we get to that, I'll do a little, our little reading here. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised, and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. Alright, and with that, we have nine speakers this evening. The first speaker is Wendy Schmaltz. Wendy, if you could please come up and state your address.
I have a couple of group chats with me. Hi, my name is Wendy Schmaltz, and my address is 2265 King's Drive in Woodbury, and I am the instructional coach at Rutherford, and along with me are both a parent and a teacher at Rutherford, and they'll introduce themselves in just a minute. But I wanted just a chance to thank all of you for making Ready, Set, Go happen, as well as some of the new initiatives that are happening in our district, and even more importantly, some of the initiatives that we're sustaining. That's such a beautiful thing, as I, as I look forward to our year, and you know, the work we're doing with RC and the literacy work that's happening, there's just been a lot of good, wonderful things, and so thank you for that. The most recent and the most interesting challenge and exciting opportunity, really in my 29-year career, is this whole idea that we started school early, kind of, and what was that going to look like, and how is that going to work, and how are parents going to think it's going, and how are the teachers going to feel? And I spent some time this summer kind of nervous about it, to be honest. Like, have we figured everything out? How are people going to feel? How is it going to go? What are the kids going to think? And I think I smiled straight for two days. It was so incredible. And then these two wonderful women, both maybe are regretting that they told me how much they enjoyed Ready, Set, Go, so then I asked them to come with me, to share their perspective.
So Laura, do you want to go next?
Hi, I'm Laura Scott. I'm a parent of a second grader at Rutherford. I just want to say, Ready, Set, Go has been amazing. Like everybody said, you can't hold your kids back. My daughter has been a little nervous about starting school and doing things that are unknown, and this made the transition so much easier. She was able to know where her locker was, she was able to know where her table spot was, all these things, and then go to school the next day and have those things be implemented has really helped her. And her and her teacher got to make a little bracelet together, and they talked about books they liked to read, how many pets they had, so they had that connection before they started school. So she felt very confident going into school, and that, as a parent, makes you feel very happy to send them on the bus, knowing that they're confident in their day. And they also read one-on-one together, which for my daughter was amazing, because she was a little hesitant about her reading, but having that one-on-one time again with the teacher to say, hey, you got this, you have this confidence, let's do this together, really helped. So as a parent, it was very successful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Connie Seifert. I am a third grade teacher at Rutherford Elementary, and I've gone back to school many, many times, and this is the first time I can say that I have ever had a situation where I could meet each and every one of my incoming students and spend some one-on-one time with them. I feel like it was the best start to a school year that I've ever had. For four reasons. Number one, for the parents, I think that partnering with families and building a positive relationship is extremely important, and meeting them and valuing their voices is an integral part of what we need to do. When a parent feels listened to with warmth and respect, we all benefit. Second, for the assessment part of it, every fall, teachers do a juggling act. The kids are in our classroom, and we are trying at the same time to assess them. And during a typical day, we might get to three to five kids, so it takes almost a full month to get the kids assessed, know how, what their fluency is like, know kind of what their comprehension is about. By meeting with them this way, I was able to listen to every one of my kids read. I had 100% attendance, which I thought was awesome. It made my program start then on the very first day, which was wonderful. For me, the teacher, I got to meet all of my students. We all did little icebreakers with them to make them smile and help them to relax, and it was just so much fun getting to know them in a whole new way. I gained valuable information about their reading, and was able to support them into their transition into third grade. Most importantly, the students got to know me. The mystery surrounding who their teacher is and where their classroom is was revealed, and I could almost see the anxiety just leave them. The better we know our students, the better we are able to help them be successful. It was a really positive experience. It made them feel valued and important, and I hope we get to do it again.
Thank you so much. Next speaker is Tamara Tinkum. If you could come up and state your address, and also apologies to the first speaker, we had a little bit of a policy change, and Barb Prue will be watching, she'll be watching the clock for you, so I'm sorry for the first speakers, but keep your eye on her a little bit too.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tamara Tinkum. I live in Lake Elmo. I'm one of the founders of a new nonprofit, Dyslexia Advocates, and we formed over the summer to address the needs of struggling readers in our state, not just our, not just Stillwater, but we really are working statewide on this initiative. I hope that some of the community got a chance to listen to a series of podcasts that were written by Emily Hanford and produced by the American Public Media. The last of the series came out this week and aired on NPR today at noon, and is being replayed today at, tonight, I think, at 9:00. And it's a deeper dive into why 40% of our elementary-age kids cannot read proficiently. The title is Hard Words: Why Our Kids Aren't Being Taught to Read. I would highly recommend finding time to listen to this whole series if you can, but especially today's was really great. October is Dyslexia Awareness Month, and Dyslexia Advocates is hosting a talk by John Alexander at the Stillwater Library on October 2nd. John is a well-known and regarded speaker and the literacy expert, and he's the executive director at Groves Academy. And I'm very excited to say that we've figured out how to offer our teachers one and a half to two free CEUs for coming, so I really hope that that is a help. This presentation is geared to teachers, school leaders, and parents alike. And then in light of it being close to Dyslexia Awareness Month, I'd like to just share a few reasons why it's important to identify dyslexia. The earlier dyslexia is identified and supported, the sooner kids catch up and keep up. Dyslexia can be identified from age five, when severely dyslexic kids will show signs. Unidentified dyslexia often results in low self-esteem and other mental health issues, and the label gives a lot of self-understanding to students. Four in five dyslexics say that they knew that they, I'm sorry, four in five dyslexics said that knowing they were dyslexic helped them understand their own strengths and difficulties, and to develop perseverance and grit. And two more. 70% of dyslexic individuals said that they were aware they couldn't do what their classmates could by age seven. And lastly, dyslexics often fail tests and exams despite having great knowledge and ability in subjects. Nine in 10 have poor spelling, poor grammar, punctuation, but can be great creative writers. And three in four struggle with times tables, but around half of dyslexics are really quite good in math. So I hope to see a lot of you on October 2nd. Thanks.
Thank you. Alrighty, next speaker is Tom Voight.
Tom Voight, 2875 Manning, West Lakeland Township. Chairperson, peleter, superintendent Ponchelli, and members of the school board. Over two and a half years ago, on February 7th, 2016, I wrote a letter to the members of the school board, and while some of you were not here, a majority were, and no, I don't expect you to recall everything I presented to you in that letter, but indulge me to refresh your memory now. I introduced myself to you not only as a parent in the school district, but also as a seasoned district office administrator from a large metro area school district, where a portion of my professional responsibility include the analysis and review of demographic data and projections. It was a time of individuals and groups offering dissenting opinions to the district's commissioned study, and I felt that I might be offered a rather unique perspective in that while I'm a parent here, to this degree is what I do. In that letter, I expressed my condolences for you being tasked with what I considered a decision that should have been made nearly 20 years prior. I offered my professional assessment that while the data presented was accurate, and that if tasked with the same question myself, I would concur with the administration's proposal that Marine and Withrow Schools were good candidates for consolidation. I noted that I could not offer the same position or assessment as to the selection of Oak Park, insomuch that the location of that site provided more options to explore, given other nearby facilities, but that the data did bear out that there was an excess capacity in the area of the district, and that one of the schools would be needed to be selected. I hypothesized that perhaps because of the small native population from the attendance area being supplemented with the gate, students made it the best candidate, and that I trusted that the administrator had good reason for selecting that as the school within the area to consolidate. In that same letter, I took the opportunity to tell you that I read that the new elementary school is being planned for 450 students. I informed you that based on the same demographic information I reviewed for consolidation, I suggested that if construction bids came in favorably, 600 would be a better number to build that for, should the money be available, and if not, certainly ensure that the building is architecturally designed to accommodate expansion. As I noted, quote, "I think sooner rather than later, we will see schools in that area in the district need, again, nearing capacity." Perhaps one should be cautious about how far they stick up their head, because several weeks later, I sent that letter, I was voluntold that I'd be a member of the Stillwater Schools' boundary committee. Serving on that committee afforded me access to demographic data that allowed me to Serving on that committee afforded me access to demographic data that allowed me to corroborate and understand, as an educational professional, why Oak Park was recommended for consolidation. Also, on our committee's attempts to build a boundary for a school eventually to be named Brookview, it became evident that the school was, in my view, pitched to replace Valley Crossing for the Stillwater students, but grossly overlooked the long-term need. I'm sure pundits can and will debate that recommendation for years, but it doesn't change the truth of the fact that the building is not properly sized. Our community listening sessions reverberated that as we explained to our fellow parents who sought to understand why they wouldn't attend a school they could see from their driveway. We knew that at the time it was going to be too small for what the community in the area of the district had planned. So fast forward to several weeks ago, when a local news establishment reported on plans for the board to discuss reopening Oak Park in lieu of expanding Brookview, which parenthetically I might add seems to have become my least favorite method of learning of board agenda items. As my brain attempted to resolve why the board would even wish to bring this up for reconsideration, my mind wandered as to how a committee would even boundary it. If the board held the previously established standards and conditions for boundaries, and if the stated goal was to alleviate crowding in the Brookview and perhaps Lake Elmo attendance areas, a committee would naturally need to pull south for the Oak Park boundary. To start, you already need to take a portion of Lily Lake, because that's where the building is placed, and that offers no help. Then, to fill Oak Park, you'd need to go south in the census areas 24, 25, 26A and B, and it doesn't take -- it would take incredibly creative, gerrymandered work of art to create a situation that doesn't place the physical building of Anderson Elementary inside the Oak Park attendance area. So we still haven't addressed the issues of students miles away at Brookview. The family upheaval would be substantial, so the only plausible solution would be to have a transit-only school, one that does not reside in its own attendance area, and all students are bused in, and that would be atypical not only for our district, but present itself an additional range of problems, most likely with transportation for students and parents alike. It doesn't seem to be a palatable, neurological, student-centric solution. So that brings me back to my letter in February of 2016. In addition to the information highlighted earlier, in that letter, I encourage this. Trust the recommendation of your administration has provided. You are a group of elected officials coming in from all walks of life and backgrounds who represent our community. You are there to guide the schools. You have hired an administrative team who has made it their profession, their lifelong career and specialty, to run schools. This is what they do. So I know you have a presentation later this night, and I would hope that your administration is going to explain the vulgarities of school finance to you, and how none of that will ever make sense to me. But if I were in their shoes, I'd be recommending you expand Brookview. As a parent whose children attend Lake Elmo, I would recommend you expand Brookview. If your administration proposes a solution that allows you to expand a building without the need to make a bonding request of voters, I suggest you take them up on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All righty, next speaker is Suzy Lindberg.
Hi, I'm Suzy Lindberg. My address is 3120 Isle Way in Stillwater. I would like to address my concerns regarding the discussion of the potential uses of the Oak Park building as it relates to the 18- to 21-year-old transition program, which is currently using a portion of that building. Many members of the community do not know that the transition program is there, let alone know what it is. In addition, many people believe that the Oak Park building is sitting empty. Today, I sat in the high school parking lot waiting to pick up my children. I asked 10 parents that walked by me if they knew what the transition program was. They all know I have a child with special needs. The only comment that they could say is, "We've heard you talk about it, but what is it? Where is it?" So I encourage you, as you review the options of what to do with the building, to make sure that the community is informed, that they know what the program is, that it exists, and that the building isn't empty. The transition program provides additional programming, education, training, and support for students with disability after they graduate from high school from the ages of 18 to 21. It's a program that all school districts are required to provide. Prior to last year, the Stillwater Transition Program was located in the high school. Last year, the program moved to the Oak Park building. It quietly moved, and not many people in the community know. The transition programs in other districts are not located within the school setting. They all have their own locations. These transition students have graduated and deserve the opportunity to be educated outside of the traditional school setting. When the program was located in the high school, the teachers had extremely limited space and resources to meet the needs of the transition students. Transition students struggled with being in high school after graduation. Being intermingled with the high school students was very challenging. It was difficult for high school students to understand why they saw students with disabilities who had graduated still in the building, learning what some perceived as very basic skills. I've had many students tell me that the transition students were often mocked and negatively viewed when that program was still in the building. This is not the kind of acceptance or perception the school should be creating within our community. At the Oak Park location, the transition teachers and students have access to the resources they need and the appropriate environment to learn. The transition program's goals are to teach students the skills and knowledge necessary to be contributing members of our community. This requires them to be working on social and functional skills, living independently skills, self-advocacy, along for preparing some of them for post-secondary opportunities and employment. The program struggled when it was located in the high school. In the past, many parents explored programs outside of our district to find alternate options. The relocation of the program has changed us. The feedback from those currently involved with the program is incredibly positive. Teachers and students are thriving. Although the number of the students in the transition program is small in comparison to the total number of the students in the district, it needs to be a meaningful, successful transition program. By utilizing a portion of the Oak Park space and sharing it with other programs that could potentially benefit from this, the Stillwater School District has the opportunity to build an amazing program and create a building space that the community can be proud of. I ask that as you consider the future uses of the Oak Park building, that you are aware of the needs of the transition program. Please take the time to understand its past limitations and the success that has come by locating it in the Oak Park building. It cannot be combined in the Oak Park building if it were to be reopened as an elementary school. I appreciate all the work you do on behalf of the students, and I hope that as board members and the community members, you will all strongly support the 18- to 21-year-old transition program. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Allison Sherman.
Hello, Board Directors, Administration, and Board Chair Peltier. My name is Allison Sherman. I live in Woodbury. Imagine my surprise when it's the first week of school, and I turned on the nightly news, and on August 29th, on KSTP, I heard several school board members told KSTP they would like to discuss the possibility of reopening one of the three closed elementary schools. That was news to me, and I follow what is going on in the district, and it was news to most people in our district. Last I heard, the Oak Park building was being used for educational and community programming and would eventually be the new home for employees who work out of the current Central Services building. I understand you all may want to reevaluate decisions or share new information that may or may not change the original plans. I do not oppose having that discussion. I welcome the discussion. What I do oppose is several board members going to KSTP rather than follow their own board policy and get this discussion on the agenda according to the rules they have established for themselves. I sit and listen to hours at nauseam, listening to the board go over each and every policy. Please stop wasting our time with these policies if you are not going to hold each other accountable to them. Going to KSTP instead of to each other and to our community does not help serve our kids. It perpetuates negative publicity and only further divides us. To me, it's like yelling fire in a crowded building. All of the good happening during that first week takes a backseat to fear, anger, and anxiety for families. As I said, I support having this conversation. Please, when revisiting this, consider the following. One, Oak Park today is not a closed building. I hear that it's just sitting vacant. There are kids, families, and the greater community being served there. Where will you put those kids? How will those kids be better served? Although our elementary programs are vital and very important, and we spend a lot of time talking about them, there are other programs that matter in this district that are equally important. I live in Woodbury. I appreciate the district's ongoing due diligence on demographics. However, I and others who live in the south part of the Stillwater area schools don't need a study to understand that the growth in our district is primarily coming from the southern part. This is a vital and vibrant part of the district that contributes significant tax dollars and should not be casually dismissed. Boundaries. We are in the second year of recently redrawn boundaries. You all know that opening a school in the central part of our district to address growth in the southern end of our district is going to affect most of our elementary schools. How does another boundary change so soon best serve our kids? The budget. We have buildings -- I hear all the time we have buildings that are bought and paid for, and I understand that, but it doesn't take into account what it costs to operate them. I would like to hear an honest and frank discussion about what is the cost difference in operating a building? It just simply isn't free. And I don't think we need to be confusing the community in the language that you use to media outlets and on your social media accounts. Keep in mind the successful immersion program currently housed at Lake Elmo. What is that program going to look like, two years, five years, 10 years from now? Where is it going to be? These are all conversations that need to be had and discussed openly and honestly with the community and with you at the table. Please stop acting like self-serving individuals trying to please individual constituents in your community. You are a board representing all communities, north to south. I live in Woodbury, and I am strongly encouraging families to engage in the process and demand better from all of you. I want to leave you with one of my favorite quotes on leadership. "A leader takes people where they want to go. A great leader takes people where they ought to be." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Andrew Palina.
My name is Andrew Palina. I'm a 2000 grad of Stillwater Area High School, by way of Lily Lake Elementary, by way of Stillwater Junior High School. I dealt with Mr. Studer, not you so much.[1370.13][1370.13][laughter] But I want to address why I feel that we're here and why I wanted to come up and I wanted to talk. We're underfunded, we're overcrowded, and we're divided. We're divided. It's not okay. How can we improve our situation? We need to start with what we can control and identify what we can't control. We can't control federal funding. We can't control truly what can be done with standardized testing. That's set by the state. State funding, we also cannot control. But what can we control? Levy funding, referendums, et cetera. We need you guys to unite the district rather than separate. And we must stop meeting budgets -- I'm sorry, meeting budgets at the expense of students by cutting programs. A couple people up here may feel like reopening Oak Park Heights will heal wounds that were created by the Necessary Bold Plan. However, I view it as it would really just reopen them for Withrow Marine, Turnberry, and Heritage Park. Turnberry and Heritage Park are the schools, or are the neighborhoods in Woodbury, that all voted for Brookview School, but we didn't build it big enough, and they weren't able to be put in there. They all can see where Brookview School is from their house, and they are not in there. Constant claims have been made that the community doesn't trust the administration. But more specifically, I believe that the community doesn't trust the board because of the constant catering to special interest groups. When our own handbook reads, "We have a moral and ethical responsibility to function impartially to assure the greatest good to the greatest number at all times." It seems that the only attempt being made to move the district forward is being done by Dr. Ponchelli and the administration. They have the support of the principals and the staff. You heard it. You heard the teachers or the principals, I'm sorry, come up and talk about the great start that we had to the new school year. That's what united looks like. That is united. The message coming from the board is that we must unite, but the actions are not matching the words. Are you asking residents to do as you say, but not as you do? Because that's what it feels like. Are the motives pure, or are they divisive? If your motives are pure, was the administration and the board aware that an interview would be given to a news outlet by a board member who is neither the chair or the vice chair, who is supposed to be who realized messages? Opening Oak Park Heights may appease a handful of families, however, it will lose more than it gains. The notion that this hasn't been discussed is a divisive campaign ploy. It makes me wonder if the discussion tonight is less about Oak Park Heights or an effort to reopen, healing wounds in an attempt to get reelected. Adding on to Brookview may suffice a current need, however, it cannot just end there. You must get a levy vote in front of this community so the silent majority can show you our pony pride. Thank you.
Next speaker is DeeDee Armstrong.
I live in Afton. I just have a bunch of questions, and I am fairly confident that tonight during the presentation, mostly they'll be answered, but just star the ones as you go through it. So the first one I have is, where are we at right now for the bond spending? What have we already spent? What do we still have left in the kitty? Did we overspend? And we know we overspent on the bus terminal offer, but where are we at with the rest of the bond dollars? What are the classroom sizes at each elementary school right now, and are there any classrooms in the district that are above the range that was established by the board? How many students who are zoned for Brookview enroll in different elementary schools in the district, and how many enroll into other public schools, and how many enroll into other private schools or charters? From last year's data, it looked like Brookview had the capture rate of about 70%. Is that still holding true now? What's the proposed budget to refurbish Oak Park and have it as office spaces? Have the plans already been drawn up? Do we plan to sell Central Services before the administration moves into Oak Park? What part of the budget would be used to pay for any remodeling? Last year, we passed certain spending projects. The purchase of the bus terminal was 6.5 million. The proposed expansion that I've heard for Brookview would be 5 million. And then, any cost to convert Oak Park to Central Services, we don't know a cost or a budget. So that's just the two that we do know is 11.5 million. And so, if we've gone over on the bus terminal by about 3 million, and then there's interest on the bond, and we already counted the sale of Washington School at 1.3 million, we already counted that towards the bus terminal, and then the sale of Marine, somewhere maybe 1 to 2 million, so that has a total income of about 7 million, so that leaves us right now without any costs for converting Oak Park at a deficit of 5 million. And so that's why I want to know where we're at with the bond money. Do we still have 5 million that can cover that cost? Is that still available? So then, my next question is, I've heard the $400,000 thing that it saves to keep Oak Park, or to keep Oak Park not as a school, but has it an administration location, and I'm assuming, and that's always a bad idea, that that comes from the 1.2 million dollars from closing three schools, divided by three would be 400,000. But then I'm confused, because last year, we heard that -- But then I'm confused because last year we heard that we couldn't show the 1.2 million. So that's where I'm confused on that. And then I think, Jen, you said that we had to make a decision next week. And I'm just wondering what the rationale is for making the decision next week. And that's, I'm just all questiony. And I'm hoping that we can look at each building and find out how can we best meet the needs for everybody all over the place, whether it's overcrowding at Brookview or overcrowding at Anderson or gate students or whatever it is? How can we be both financially responsible and also help staff and students? That's all I got.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker is Sarah Hunter-Cook. Sorry.
Sarah Hunter-Cook.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Which I was going to say. So my name is Sarah Hunter-Cook, and I live at 522 Broadway Street in Stillwater. When I tell people I work in our district that I teach adult basic education, it's often a surprise that we exist. So I would like to share with you about our district's adult basic education program. I hope in knowing about the district's program, we might be able to serve more members of the community. We're a valuable resource to adults looking to increase their basic skills for employment, college, or to be able to help their children with their homework or become more involved in the community. We are located in the ECFC and have a wonderful partnership with our district's preschool program. We work together to welcome families to our district and provide them with resources to be successful. Our ABE program offers English, prep for the GED, Accuplacer, and the ParaPro. We also provide basic computer, reading, and math instruction to adults. We served 81 students in our program during the 2017-2018 school year and 85 students during the 2016-2017 school year. We serve both US-born and immigrant students. Our immigrant students come from many different countries, including Mexico, Guatemala, Colombia, Ecuador, Peru, Cuba, the Ukraine, Russia, Belarus, Cambodia, China, Japan, Vietnam, Thailand, Iraq, India, Egypt, Sudan, Eritrea, Ethiopia, and Somalia. Our students range in age from 17 years old to 77. We have students who are licensed and experienced professionals in their country. Here in Minnesota, they are working low-paying, low-level jobs in order to pay their bills. In our program, they are gaining the English language skills and navigational skills to achieve their goals. We also have local students who come to us to prepare for the GED or increase their basic skills after possibly missing too much school and then being aged out. Several of our learners are here in the US trying to create a life for themselves and their families while they wait for family members to be able to come here too. Some have waited a short time, others have waited six, nine, and even 18 years for a husband, wife, or child to arrive. We are a safe community that values and respects the diversity within our program. Our participants openly share their personal stories, beliefs, and culture in an environment where people are eager to listen and learn from each other. Our students form lasting friendships and valuable community and school district connections within our program. They support each other and cheer each other on as they pursue big and small goals. I will just share with you some of our program highlights and our most recent successes. We have 10 active volunteers who regularly donate their time and talents to our program. We have a student who came to us in 2014 without English language skills or literacy in her own language. She said she had never held a pencil before. She now reads, writes, and speaks English proficiently. She now feels confident making medical appointments, speaking to her doctor, and interacting with English speakers in the community. We have a student without any formal education and who is a mother of five children, two under three years old, who also cares for her mother-in-law, works five hours a day, cooks all her family's meals, and supports her church community as well, and somehow finds time in her life to come to English class. We have a 77-year-old man who started coming to our program two years ago and has missed hardly a day of class since he started. We had a student who came to us two years ago with education through sixth grade in her country. She passed the GED exam in May 2018. We have several students who work nights, maybe sleep an hour before they get their children off to school, and then come to our morning English or GED classes. Some students have achieved citizenship while attending our program. Many of our students go on to get a job, get a GED with us, or later enroll in college. Many of our students are parents of children in the district and attend ECFC EL parent class where they can equip themselves to be active participants in their child's education. We connect with our early childhood teachers to create opportunities for ABE learners to gain experience through volunteering in preschool classrooms. We had a learner who went on to sub as a preschool assistant and then found a job for the 2017-18 school year as a preschool assistant. Okay, I have so many highlights. I'll wrap it up, though. But I would just like to say thank you for listening to this brief snapshot of our district's ABE program. If you have any questions about our program or know any families in the community who could benefit from our services, we would just love to hear from you, and we would love your help in promoting our wonderful program.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Lauren Schuffer.
That's me.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Schuffer. I live at 4785 McDonald Drive, Circle North, here in Stillwater. I moved here about three years ago from South Florida. A lot of people think that's probably a little nuts, but I would tell you, in the profession that I have, I get to travel the United States, and there is no town that is the equal of Stillwater, Minnesota, and that's why we're here. So we're thrilled. That I can tell you. What I'm going to talk to you about tonight, I talked to you about last spring. Some of you were here, some of you are not. And that's the school safety of the schools here in Stillwater. It's going to be a very sobering conversation with some data I'm going to give you tonight. My background is in education. I've chaired two education boards for charter schools as well as the City of Delray Beach Education Advisory Board. I have a degree in education. I have a little bit of background. And one of the schools that I chaired experienced a school shooting. And that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. Today, I sent you all a copy of a couple of letters that I shared with your staff and principals here in town to bring up the very things I'm going to talk to you about tonight. I would encourage you to take a peek at them when you have a minute at your computer. According to the US government, last year, there were 236 incidents involving weapons, guns, in American schools. Since Sandy Hook, there have been 273 shootings, 462 children, teachers, and staff shot, and 152 killed. That's sobering. This summer, I had the privilege of speaking with an emergency room nurse at the hospital that took in all the kids from Marjory Stillman Douglas High School in South Florida. And I'm here to tell you, it was emotional. So with that in mind, I want to talk to you about one of the things that all of these communities have in common. I've talked to people at Sandy Hook. I've talked to people at Columbine. I've talked to people at Marjory Stillman Douglas. The one thing they all say is exactly the same thing this school board and the administration will say if we have an incident in this town, is that I just never believed it could happen here. Every one of them have that in common. With that in mind, the sheriff did an evaluation of all the schools in Stillwater. I think he's still working on finishing up the ones from Arama County. We need to take a look at that. That needs to be public information. We need to take a look at that and have that become the baseline for what we do in the future here in Stillwater. Because here's what I'm going to tell you. The next school shooting is being planned right now, somewhere. It can't be in Stillwater. It can't. And our schools, I have four kids, two of them have graduated, and like I said last time, I'm a little of an old duffer, but I've got one at Rutherford, just started kindergarten. And I've got another one that just started at the middle school with Eric here, who's a terrific principal, by the way. And when I look at those schools, because I've had some experience, I will tell you, your schools are vulnerable as hell. They're not secure. They're not even close to being safe. Not even close. They are wonderful schools. Don't get me wrong. I think Stillwater schools are some of the finest schools in the country. You've got great staff. When you walk in, as a former educator, you walk in, you can feel the energy, you can feel the juice. It's phenomenal. But they're not safe. When I listened to you open up the program tonight, you went over the mission statement of the Stillwater schools and Washington County schools. Nowhere in that mission statement was mentioned the safety and security of our students, teachers, and staff. That has to be your number-one priority, above all else, above all else. And I encourage you to make some meaningful changes in these schools this year. Because from last spring to the first time I talked to you till now, there have been some progress. There has been some progress. I enjoyed working with your staff. They're terrific people. But not near enough. Not even close. You're talking about budgets. You're talking about schools. Does it do any good to open up schools that aren't safe for the students, faculty, and staff? I would argue not. So with that in mind, I want to tell you, I'm going to use up all my time here, I want to tell you that I do appreciate the service you provide to the community. No one's getting rich being a school board member, nobody. And it's tough being in charge of the complaint department quite often. But I really want Stillwater schools to lead the state of Minnesota in being the safest schools here and maybe the United States. And that is an achievable goal. I will tell you, with the shootings that happened over this last year, that would be comparable to two shootings a week. With that in mind, would we tolerate aircraft that fell out of the sky two a week in the United States? Who'd fly? Nobody. Nobody'd fly. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your undivided attention. Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. I will first read the items on consent. We have eight minutes of August 23, 2018 school board meeting, dispersment register August 25 through September 14, human resources personnel report, series 300 policies, school district administration, field trip for one coach and six students to travel to Indianapolis, Indiana, October 23 through the 27, 2018, for the National FFA Convention and Expo Career Show, and field trip for one director, six chaperones, and 57 students to travel to Boston, Massachusetts, March 27 through the 31, 2019, for the orchestra, the concert orchestra spring tour. Could I, all right, Director Patachuk?
Yes. I would like to request that item B, dispersment register, August 25 through September 14, be a separate item.
Okay. So let's have a, could we please have a motion and a second and a vote for items A, C, D, E, and F?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Director Pearson, all those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I will turn it over to Director Patachuk.
Yes. I have, we've got a rather thick range of items, and I have about, I've gone through, and there were several things that I was unsure about and felt that it was my duty to raise questions on those. There's about four or five of those, and they are on page 2, 4, and 6. And I can mention what they are.
Director Patachuk, I'm sorry to interject, but we don't have that. If those are specific questions, we ask for those to come before this evening so we could have the information for you. The specificity I think that you might be looking for, we don't have in front of us.
Okay. Can I ask one general question then? I think the way we are operating as of July 1 is that the items that are in here will be approved first, and then they will be approved and paid for. So I'm saying that's true of everything that's in here. Is that correct?
That is true. With the exception of those there was in the practice component.
It's not, the procedural component, is that if there are bills that essentially need to be paid that fall somehow in between school board meetings, that I would have the authority to issue payment on those bills. That said, kind of what is the criteria for what that looks like? We had one school board meeting in July, and so with the change of procedure, there were some catching up to do, if you will. There's also if we're looking at a bill that we're not necessarily going to stop payment on, for example, a phone or utility bill, and there's significant finance charges, those two wouldn't necessarily be able to come to you before unless we're willing to pay the finance charges for those bills.
Sure. And I understand that, and I think you've answered my biggest question. Again, what I'm kind of wondering for the future, because that's what I'm most concerned about here, and I'm also concerned about our fiduciary responsibility to overview this. And so it's extensive. I think there was probably about 20, 30 pages here, and they're very small items on there. And even my resting of the question, isn't a sign of distrust? What I'm looking for is understanding. And so if I can't do that tonight, which is what I prefer, because I think some of these, even though they're not before you, I can read, and you may or may not know what they are, and probably a sentence or two might clarify it. If you prefer that I send you an email on that, I will do that for this time. But the turnaround time on this is challenging to board members. Because one, what Barb usually does for me, and I appreciate that, is when this is ready, we get it, then we have to set aside time to go through it. And I'm saying normally an hour or two hours to go through that in turnaround time and get questions before the meeting makes a challenging.
Does that mean that the week before, when we get you the board packet the week before, that that's?
This did not come to us a week before.
You get it electronically.
My assistant sends that a week prior via email. Director Hupner?
That's what I was going to say. I think Linda Moncrief sent it to us last week, and is it the same one?
It's the same one, yes.
Yeah. You got that mic, I'm sure.
Yeah. But I'm a dinosaur a little bit, but I work off a hard copy, and that's as soon as I can get it.
You could print it.
But regardless, regardless, what I'm asking is this, and if you want to do that, I'm okay with that, is could we put this in a separate item so that we could go through it at the meeting? Give us a number of days you want us to send the questions to you, and I'd gladly do that.
We, you know, if you need us to make a hard copy when we send the electronic one, we're absolutely open to doing that for you. When you get that a week before, we, and a message I sent out, I asked for questions by Wednesday, so we could have Wednesday afternoon, Thursday, to bring that information forward. If that doesn't work, the board's welcome to have a conversation about what the needs are for the board.
Director, I'm going to go with Paula O'Lockman right now.
I was just curious, you know how long it's been past practice where we've had the dispersment register available to us? I feel like it's been several years that we've been having this. And so I was just curious if there was something that precipitated the questions, because I know you've been on the board for almost a decade, and I don't remember there being so many questions about this consent agenda item.
And I would say lots of places that I've been, this is part of the procedure, that board members get this. But you're right, it's relatively recent. I think the, boy, I want to say it's been about a year that we've gotten this. Maybe it's longer, maybe it's less. But I'm saying regardless, I, it takes effort and time to go through it as a board member. But I feel that is our responsibility. And what I'm prepared to do tonight, and I'll gladly do that, is like I said, I've got about four or five questions. I can put those in an email and to Kristen or Lynn or whoever is most affected. I can put those in an email to Kristin or Lynn or whoever is most effective. But I also am conveying to the public, this is part of our due diligence.
Director O'Lockman?
So I'm going to respectfully push back. I think that it's on the consent agenda for a reason. I think then when we start to get in the minutia of line item by line item, that crosses over to a managerial role. And I think that, obviously, if there are legitimate questions that we have about certain items, we can check in with our Director of Finance or our Superintendent. But I think to take the public's time to go through line by line item of certain items that have been purchased, that's simply not our role. And I don't think that we should pretend that we can understand the full complexity of the financial records there before the public.
Director Pearson?
And I would just push back a little bit on that, as I attended the treasurer training session for MSBA, that it is our job to know what's going on in the dispersment register. It doesn't mean we ask, doesn't mean we need to have an explanation for every single line item, but they recommended that we check, look through check numbers and ask questions if there's any missing, and sometimes we request invoices, and it is absolutely part of our job to do that. Not to sit and look at every line item, but it is our job to be accountable for what's in there. And I think when I've had questions, I have usually just asked them, and I have received responses. If, and we can talk about whether it should be at the board table or just asking the questions, but it is our responsibility to know what's in there.
So, go ahead.
Well, I think that's why we get this thing from Linda the week before, just so we can do exactly what you said, Shelley. I take a look through it when I get it from her. If I have questions, I'll call Kristin and say, what's this all about? Service on Stillwater turf and power? If I think that amount is something that I believe is exorbitant. And I think that's how we're supposed to question. I think that is why it's a consent. If the board feels it shouldn't be a consent and it should be pulled off as a report, that's, you know, certainly within the purview of the majority of the board. But we've nev, I mean, I've been on the board for almost 11 years now, and it's always been part of the consent agenda. And we've always gotten this so that we can check it. The change has been, as Mike pointed out, that now we're getting things, and then the bill is getting paid. I think the Finance Committee probably had to deal with something. We got an email from the Activities Director, that there was a problem with hiring officials and when you had one meeting in July and so on. So I presume that's been taken care of. But to suddenly start pulling items out, as we've never done it before, just kind of seems a little bit awkward right now.
With all due respect, it's not necessarily because the item is excessive.
Well, no, I said that's when I do it. That's what it is.
Sure. And I'm just saying, and that's the bulk of what I'm looking at before me, and some of those are rather huge sums, $33,000, $32,000. And what I want, and I believe I have a responsibility of that as a board member, is to have an understanding.
Okay. So, Director, Director Stevlin?
I feel like these are really interesting questions that are being raised, and I think it ties to some of the conversations we have had over the past few months in terms of, you know, what is being done at the Finance Committee level, and, you know, what things could we be doing that would make our process better, stronger, more clear, more accessible to the whole board? I think you're raising good questions here to be able to have access to the answers that you're looking for. Of course, that's what we're supposed to be doing, but the process is something I think we need to look at and, you know, see if there are some ways that we can, you know, make improvements. I think it would be helpful.
Director O'Lockman?
So I just want to respond to Director Pearson. In no way, shape, or form was I saying that we abdicate our responsibility. That is why we have our Director of Finance, who comes before us three times to show us the budget. And if we haven't been able to do our due diligence then, what I heard Mike saying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard you saying is questioning some of the purchases, and that simply, in my opinion, is not our job. That's a managerial role and responsibility.
Director Pearson?
Thank you. I think we maybe need a deeper conversation. I think one of the ones that Mike had shared with me that he had a question about was something about Valley Crossing. I think that is something maybe that is just a question. What does that mean? We've talked about Valley Crossing a lot, and so what's it in there for? I think that's a valid question. So not questioning what the Finance Department is doing, but just what is this? Because we've heard a lot about Valley Crossing, and there's another one in there that was a lot about what we've been hearing about as a board, and so what does that mean? So I think there is a place for that, whether it's here or whether it's individually. Some of that would be good for the whole board to hear, but I don't think it's about not trusting what people are doing. It's about wanting understanding as a board.
Superintendent Pontrilli?
I'd just like to make a comment. Process-wise, you receive the register a week before. We're happy to print it off if that's a need. You have the week to go through, a little bit less. We're simply asking that you ask the questions before we're here tonight so we can come prepared to give you the information that you want. You can have the conversation here, or if it suffices and you get the answer you need, we're not saying that we aren't happy to give it to you. We just need, would appreciate professionally to have a call to say, here are my questions, and then we are happy to pull all that together and give it to you and share it with the whole board.
So I would agree with that, and I think we've had a nice discussion here. I think as a courtesy to your fellow board members, it would also be nice to have the questions beforehand and give our Finance Department the opportunity to present the answers instead of doing it here at the board table in case that the answers are not readily available. So I hear you, and I think it'd be, I think we can have a future conversation about this. Thank you for your bringing this up. Director Patachuk, if there's no other comments or questions, I would like to call the vote. Could we have a motion and a second to adopt Item B dispersment register, August 25 through September 14, 2018?
So moved. I'll second.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Please signify and raise your hand by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, raise your hand, say nay. Director Patachuk is a nay, moving on to the reports. First report is the first day of school. That is Dr. McDowell and Kristin Holheisel, Ms. Holheisel.
Good evening, Board Chair Pelletier, Superintendent Pontrilli, and school board members. We've been fortunate to hear about a lot of positive things on the first day of school. I'll be honest with you, with my literal interpretation, I struggled with what really was the first day of school, as I'm trying to pull the numbers. So I will say that the numbers that I will be showing tonight are reflective of September 4th, because that's when we had our, essentially, our entirety of our student population present. You can see that our enrollment numbers in total are, at least on first day, are 8,613. The comparison to what that looked like on October of 2017, then spring of 2018, so essentially last year, and then now where we are today in the red, and that's absent early childhood special education, you can see the comparison. The reason why we don't, I don't go back and present, you know, what was it, opening day a year ago, is because those numbers fluctuate. It is opening day. And typically during the course of a school year, historically, we lose between 60 and 100 students. You can see, actually, that's reflected when you look between our October 2nd number and our May 31st number, you have a swing of 80-plus kids. So as wonderful as the first day number is, it's not the numbers that we take to use for funding or anything moves forward based on October numbers. Where we anticipated the increase, now when this, when we say 17 students, we knew we would be graduating in a class of over 680, and the incoming kindergarten class at the time we were projecting at 550, we assumed even with all of that, we would have a gain of 17 students. Part of the discussion when we were at the Finance Committee/Budget Committee level was at least the feeling in parts of the community that we would have an exodus, given the consolidation of schools, and that it would be a significant exodus. And so in part, with part of that conversation, we backed off of that number. I think at least to show first day numbers with an actual increase of 131, that's reflective more of our 2016, 2017 first day numbers, which would indicate that we didn't have the exodus that some had said that we might see. And I think it's great. I think it's great to be above budget productive numbers at this time. Transportation, again, kind of to the first day experience. I will say, it was with hesitation, we heard with the open forum speakers, that there was some apprehension or hesitation as to what the staggered start would look like. And I would say that I was a part of that, because with transportation, first day is not an easy thing. And then to think, oh, my goodness, we're going to have three first days is daunting. However, that said, I believe that transportation, as far as the buses and the kids getting to places at least somewhat close to their, you know, estimated time of when they'd be picked up and dropped off, happened. And I believe the reason why it happened is because the kids that were new to buildings that first day, that had no idea where the buses were, the symbols, and where they're supposed to go, they had a whole day by themselves just to work through that. So by the time more of the population came in in the secondary, where you have kind of, you have your kids that already know kind of the lay of the land, you don't have the ones looking. So you no longer have kids exiting a building, you know, hundreds of students at a time, so it progressed easier. Once you get those secondary kids, then you get to elementaries on time. And so it just compounds the success of what the transportation, the busing looks like as far as transportation. You can see, in total, we transported 7,984 students. That does include, we provide transportation to St. Croix Prep, St. Croix Catholic, Salem, Lutheran, and New Heights. So that's all kids that we are responsible for transporting. And then we had 4,685 users signed up with the bus tracking app. Now, this seems, oh, my goodness, we only have half of the people that are riding tracking, but we have a lot of families with more than one kid. And so we estimate that over 90% of our district population that gets transported is using the app, which is great, and it's been relatively consistent and successful so far this year. Food service, you can see we're serving breakfast, serving lunches. This is consistent with last year. Same with the early childhood program and school age care, 700 students enrolled. I know that we had discussed earlier this week that even with the school age care kind of back to, it's hard to even find people to fill those positions. And we have large numbers, because when the economy's good, parents work, and you can't find people to fill the positions to work in the school. So all very positive, good problems to have. Let's go that way.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Pelletier and Board. All I can say is wow. This has been an unbelievable start on the programming side of the House for the school year. And two things come to mind. One is team. We start in November, planning for the next start of the school year as we move into curriculum and what we're going to offer in different packages. But the other piece is just alignment. And the slide that's up now, the Ask Me Why, Ask Me How, last year we had a focus on just Ask Me Why. And if you recall, we went around and asked several of our staff, community members, why do you do what you do? Well, this year it's about how. How do we do it? How do we get to the point that we're getting the maximum learning that's happening in classroom, the maximum engagement, the maximum happiness, the maximum everything? And that really is our next slide, on student engagement. The district-wide focus this year is really around student engagement. And we've taken that all the way back from the summer when we brought in Stanford D-School and focusing on our design thinking work that's being carried out now, to things like student innovation teams that are going to kick off here in the next month. We have two elementary schools, we have a middle school, and our high school that are all going to be putting together student innovation teams to really be looking at, how do we do something different to improve the school from the student's perspective, and how do we come up with a solution that's human-centered in terms of its design? And then we're going to continue with this shadow of student experience. And if you remember, last year, we said we're also going to include you this year. So in February, we're going to kick that off as well. But we really want to have a focus this year on how do we incorporate more student voice into the very day-to-day specific things that we do in every one of our buildings. To that end, for those of you that attended our back-to-school kickoff, we brought in Dr. Shiroki Hawley. And what we set out there is a movement forward about just that. How do we focus in on our instructional framework? We've shared that with you in the past on, from the University of Washington. The student engagement piece. And then how do we truly deliver this outrageous love, as he calls it, to all of our kids, all of our staff, all of our families? And so with that, we have some awesome things going on that are, on the programming side, kicked into full gear this year. And so what we thought, better than me telling you about them, was to bring up people who are actually experiencing them. And so what I'd like to do now is bring up some of our principals and staff to talk about Ready, Set, Go conferences, in their words.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Pelletier and Superintendent Pontrilli and members of the Board. Super fun to stand up before you tonight and tell you about the home run that was hit in this district a couple of weeks ago. Home run by district leadership, home run by the staffs in all the building, speaking specifically, and home run by our families for taking such a great time, a commitment to them of being a part of the Ready, Set, Go conferences. So it's a pleasure, I'm going to stick on script, because my staff at Lily Lake knows that if Nate Cox doesn't do that, sometimes it can get long-winded, so I'm going to go here quickly. It is a pleasure to be able to speak with you briefly tonight on behalf of the elementary principal team. We simply want you to know that the start of this school year has been fantastic. I'm entering my 23rd year in this great profession of education, my sixth year here in Stillwater, and I personally have not experienced a smoother start to the school year than this year. As an elementary principal team, we largely attribute the great start of this school year to the Ready, Set, Go conferences that were held back in our buildings on August 27 and 28. Knowing that I'd be speaking before you tonight, here are some comments, better from me, but from the Lily Lake teachers in regards to what they want you to know about the Ready, Set, Go conferences. And after visiting with my elementary principal colleagues, I believe these comments are similar to what they have heard from their teachers as well. One teacher said, "The information I gathered from each child was so important. I learned about each child's hobbies and interests. I was able to do the Bass reading assessment, which gave me great insight into each child's reading skills." Another staff member, "I was not sure what to expect, not sure that the time would give me very much useful information, but it was amazing. It gave me a chance to talk to each child and make a connection by learning more about them." Another teacher, "I was able to meet my students individually, which made it very personal. I knew who they were the minute they walked into my room on the first day of school, and I had a good idea of what their little personalities were like and who might need a little extra support during the first few days." The initial meeting between, another teacher, "The initial meeting between myself and almost every student was relaxed, comfortable, and welcoming. Many families mentioned they were thankful for the time to ask questions." Another teacher, "I was able to get a sense of a few students that were a little more anxious about starting school, and I had an opportunity to say a few specific things to them during the Ready, Set, Go conferences to help relieve their stress for the first day of school." Ready, Set, Go conferences gave me a chance to connect with parents about sensitive concerns, physical health, social, emotional health, and really gave us a calm moment with each child and their family. I felt grounded and connected to my students before the first day of school. I knew every student's name when they walked through the door on the first day." Two more for you, sorry. "Through the Ready, Set, Go, it seemed as though the students were more comfortable coming into school on the first official day. One of my students," this is my favorite, "one of my students even came in the first day with a drawing of a blue hippo that she had made for me as their teacher. She learned at Ready, Set, Go conference that my favorite animal was the teacher, was a hippo, and my favorite color was blue." And the last one, from a teacher to you, board members. "School board members, thank you for recognizing this structure as what is best for kids." One of these comments in here that I read to you was shared by a 25-year-plus veteran teacher who personally pulled me aside and shared with me that they were a naysayer and very skeptical about the idea of our Ready, Set, Go conferences. But now after doing them, they are completely sold and cannot imagine starting a school year without this opportunity. So in closing, we thank our district leaders for So in closing, we thank our district leaders for advocating for Ready, Set, Go conferences and leading us in this idea. This is another example of how they place the needs of our students first. And we also want to thank our school Board members immensely for approving the school calendar last year in order to make this happen. We were absolutely thrilled with this new startup plan, and thank you so very much for helping us kick off the school year, being able to meet the social and emotional needs of our students in such a positive and proactive way. Thank you, guys.
So keeping with the theme of elementary, and wow, we kicked off elementary literacy district-wide, which meant that Rachel Larson and her team spent a lot of the summer helping our staff getting trained so that they were ready to go for this kickoff district-wide. And I'm going to put Mark Drummerhausen on the spot and have him come up and say a few words. And the reason is because, if you remember, Mark's building piloted this last year. And so they're coming into their second year of this. And the reason I want to put Mark on the spot is he had given me some anecdotes from teachers, just noting the difference that they're seeing second round after working with kids who have had experience in our literacy program a year ago.
Good evening, Chair Pelletier, Superintendent Pontrelli, members of the Board. I'm very excited today just to talk to you real briefly about our year two of our literacy adoption here at Brookview Elementary School. Last year, we implemented Lucy Cockens reading units of study building-wide through all of our kiddos, kindergarten through fifth grade. We had a successful year of implementation last year, and this year, just in the first three weeks, we're seeing even more benefits with our kiddos. And like Nate did, I had a few teachers just stop me in the hallway and come into my office and just share some of the things that they noticed here just in the first couple of weeks of school. And I just want to share those things with you, just some of their comments. So the first one, before I get into the first comment, I just want to talk about, the first teacher referred to old friends. And in this old friends, they're not talking about kiddos or peers in their classroom. They're talking about the books that they have the very first day at school, based on the level libraries that you approved last year for all of our classrooms. So at the end of last school year, all of our kids picked three to five of their favorite books that they liked, put them in a bag, and gave them to their teacher before they left for the summer. Over the summer, those teachers gave them to the new teacher for this year. And the very first day of school, they had their favorite books from last year sitting on their desk, sitting on their table, ready to rock and roll, so they can find text on that first day that they liked, so they didn't have to get into the routines of book shopping, first day, first week, and those sorts of things. So when she refers to old friends, just so you know, that's what they're talking about. "The kids were excited to meet their old friends, book bags with books they choose from last spring, and read on the first day of school. Our stamina was the first week and continues to be where above where I started with the kids last year. They definitely are reading long and strong each day. I could push the kids to over 30 minutes, and it's only the second week of school." Another teacher said, "Our students have a much stronger stamina for reading their independent texts. They're much more comfortable talking and writing about what they have read. They're making stronger connections to the text and able to analyze parts of the story with success." And I'll just share one more here. "The students are familiar with the consistent language used in the units of study from last year. Having taught Lucy Cockens in multiple grade levels in the past, excuse me, I'm aware the language is consistent across grade levels, but having the students recognize it is so helpful at the beginning of each year. Having so many new things to teach, the fact that this is familiar to them is fantastic. While obviously the content changes with each grade levels, having the same teacher language and similar format each year helps a student know the procedures and expectations during their reading and writing blocks. The kiddos are excited to see the books, series, and authors they are familiar with and anxious to check out the new books here this school year." So with that, I just want to say thank you for the new books for all of our classrooms, and we'll talk more about our literacy adoption here in meetings to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to our secondary buildings, I want to bring up a bunch of folks to talk about Web and Link Crew that was a hit once again.
Good evening, Board Chair Pelletier, members of the Board and Administration. I'm Andy Fields, Principal at Oakland Middle School, and I want to echo the comments made by our administrative team. We have had a fantastic start. This is year 20 for me in public education, and it is the best year that I've had, both as an administrator and as a teacher. Like many up here before, I was skeptical about having a staggered start. I like to get all of our students in the building and start getting started on our year. But as I found, when we got our sixth graders in a day early to work with our eighth-grade students, it was magical. And I, as a leader, I often turn to the excellent staff that we have for their guidance and their leadership. And I want to tell a little story before I turn it over to one of our guidance counselors, Mrs. Ko. As we learned about having our sixth-grade students start early with our eighth-grade Web leaders, staff came to me and they had an idea. They proposed that we roll out the red carpet like in Hollywood, and that all of our staff would be present to welcome them, to celebrate them, to take pictures, to interview them about the success that they're ready to have for the school year. It wasn't an administrative idea, it was our teachers that are buying into our plan. And I have found that when teachers buy into the plans, they will do incredible things. This wasn't added work, this was best practice, and our teachers worked extra hard this summer to come in and plan for it. And so I want to thank you as well, from a middle school lens, for your efforts to approve this calendar that is best for students. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the stars and Mrs. Ko, one of our guidance counselors.
My name is Julie Ko, and I'm one of the counselors at Oakland Middle School. And we have a great group of students here who have been very patient, and they would love to come up and tell you about their experience, not only as Web leaders of our school, but I thought it would be neat to invite some sixth-grade students, who were the recipients of all of the orientation that we had, so that they could share their experience as well.
Thank you.
My name is Ashley Burns, and I'm an eighth-grade Web leader at Oakland Middle School. I'm excited to be a Web leader because last year, I was new to the Stillwater District, and I think it would have been way easier if I had an older student to mentor and help me throughout the year. This year, I wanted to help the sixth graders feel welcome and comfortable. I also want to reassure them that they're an important part of the Oakland community. Orientation Day was inspiring to me because I thought to myself, we're helping hundreds of students learn the Oakland way. To be a good student, to have fun, to be kind, caring, and compassionate towards others. Being a part of Web also helps us as eighth graders become better students. We know we are role models to the students at our school, and our successes will inspire sixth and seventh graders to do well and possibly become future Web leaders. Thank you.
My name is Ben Most. I'm a sixth grader at Oakland, coming from Lake Elmo Elementary. When I entered the gym on Orientation Day and saw all the eighth-grade Web leaders cheering and clapping for us, I was surprised that so many kids thought that much of us and wanted to make us feel welcome. It made me feel much more excited about school because the Web leaders knew we might feel anxious, and they did everything they could to make us feel like we belonged at Oakland. We did lots of activities to learn our classmates' names and learn more about them as people, which helped us make new friends right away. It also helped us not be scared of the bigger kids at Oakland. The Web leaders helped us feel included in the school and helped us find our way around. It makes me want to be a Web leader when I get to eighth grade.
Aww. Thank you.
My name is Maurice Kaladny, and I'm an eighth-grade Web leader at Oakland Middle School. I wanted to be a Web leader to help sixth graders transition into middle school because it is very different from elementary school. There are worries about multiple classrooms, lockers, fitting in, and older kids. I wanted to help students not feel alone and feel looked out for. Also, Web leaders are closer to the students' ages than the teachers are, so you can make a closer, personal connection to the students. I even showed my small group where my locker is during passing time, if they need help, they can come find me. And the other day, there was a sixth grader who didn't find a seat on the bus, and since he knew me from Web, he sat down with me. The Web program also influences the seventh-grade students too, as a majority of them were at Oakland last year for sixth grade. This year, the Web leaders had the privilege of being leaders at the seventh-grade Courage Retreat. The seventh graders looked at us as role models of what they could do next year. The Web program gives students a strong, positive view and a great start to the school year. Thank you.
My name is Ella Tousen. I went to Anderson Elementary School, and I'm a sixth-grade student at Oakland Middle School. Going to middle school felt scary to me. I was nervous about the classes, worried about getting into my locker, and worrying if I'd fit in and make new friends. The sixth-grade orientation led by our Oakland Web leaders was a great way for me to start the school year. It was fun, it made me feel more comfortable and welcome. It also gave me a chance to get to know others in my grade right away. We got to work with Web leaders in a small group and do fun activities that help kids get to know each other and feel a sense of belonging. It kind of gave us a head start on getting to know Oakland in a positive, fun way.
And yes, wow, there's more. So we're going to bring up our high school kids now.
Right.
Good evening, Dr. Pontrelli and School Board Chair Pelletier and Board members. Matt Kraft, Assistant Principal at Stillwater Area High School. I love Link Crew because I get to wear an untucked t-shirt to a school board meeting. But in all seriousness, I just want to take a brief moment again to echo Mr. Fields's comments about your decision to approve the school calendar that allowed our class of 2022, our ninth-grade class, to come to Stillwater Area High School, excuse me, on day one and experience the first day of school. You've heard me stand up here before and talk about the importance of ninth grade and talk about ninth grade being that linchpin year. And so there's no better way to start that off than to reduce the anxiety that is the big high school by allowing our ninth graders to see that there are opportunities to see it as a smaller school based on the programming that we have in place. So again, thank you for that. I want to introduce two amazing staff members, who are two of our six Link Crew advisors. They're veteran teachers, and yet they fill me with energy each and every day because of what they bring to our students and to our staff with their fresh ideas and energy. So I'll let them introduce themselves and just say a quick thing about Link Crew, and then we'll get to our star as well.
I'm Kathy Meyer, and I'm a math teacher at Stillwater High School. And this is my second year doing Link Crew, and I'm very grateful for the support that you have given us for Link Crew. I'm grateful for the 110 students, junior and senior leaders who are willing to volunteer their time to welcome 750 ninth graders on that first day of school. And more importantly, I think about this program is the fact that it's not only an orientation on the first day of school, but that our juniors and seniors support these kids all the way through the year. It's an ongoing program.
I'm Amy Hoffman. I'm a special education teacher at the high school, and just wanted to again say thank you for allowing us to bring the special program into our schools to help our ninth graders feel more integrated, more safe, more connected. And also, as a special education teacher, I have the privilege of making sure it's inclusive, and so that we had about 90 of our special ed students participating of all across the spectrum of special education within our Link Crew. So it was just a great experience for all students. So thank you very much. Thank you.
I want to introduce Jared, who's representing the 110 Link leaders from Stillwater High School. But to know that we've got his back, like our t-shirt state, I want to give a shout out to our representative up there, Abdul Mohammed, who also serves the high school as a Link leader. So Jared, take it away.
Hi, everyone. My name, as Mr. Kraft said, is Jared Orman Miller. I'm a senior, and this is my second year and sadly my final year doing Link Crew at Stillwater Area High School. Now, one of the questions that people ask me the most is, why Link Crew? Why are you in it? What is the importance behind it? And does it work? With the same concept to an answer that, why do I wear an undershirt? It provides comfort. It provides something that, no matter what, if I spill marinara sauce on this during lunch, I still have a shirt underneath to protect me and to, of course, have my back. Being in Link Crew for the past two years has really amped up my leadership. My three main goals in life is to lead, protect, and serve. And to protect and lead these freshmen coming up to the high school is a very big honor for me, and it is a really big honor to wear this bright, bright pink shirt. So I really want to thank the advisors at Stillwater High School for picking me, to become one of the leaders at the high school for both years. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as they're leaving, if we can give just one more round of applause for our kids that came up and waited. And then, as with all of our programmings, we can put everything in place. You can approve everything, but it doesn't happen without our principals. Our principals are the ones that get the teachers organized, when the teachers want to get organized and do what they want to do. They're the ones that are putting this all together throughout all of our buildings. So if we could give them a round of applause. So just a couple more things about the first day. Some reminders about how we're putting students first. There you go. Just a reminder that all of our elementary schools now have what we're calling green rooms. These are those rooms that are staffed with behavior support paras. They're part of our team of multi-tier systems of support, or MTSS is what you'll commonly hear it in EdU speak. We're implementing Yoga Calm more inclusively across our elementary schools. And then we've got some security enhancements. And I know earlier at Open Forum, some things were talked about. But just to give some updates on where we're at in this process of security enhancements. We've improved our building access, as was mentioned, our protocol changes at the high school that we're working through, as Abdul talked about. But nonetheless, we're working on how to get that more secure. We've added additional AI phones between the pack and the main entrance. Those are those phones that you can ring the buzzer, and it has a camera on it, so you can see who's there before you buzz them in there and at the Early Childhood Center. We have a new documentation and reporting system and are going to be offering new training with regard to how we report on bullying or what is suspected bullying throughout of our system. George Nolan and his team, and Annette Solman, and John Perry have worked hard to figure out what really is the best systems that are out there right now for making sure we're capturing what we need to capture and addressing what we need to capture. Then we move on to retooling and organizing how we're monitoring our threat assessment process. So Paul Lee and his team, along, again, with George Nolan, and Annette Solman, and John Perry, are all working on what do we define as a threat assessment, whether it's for a building or for an individual student. So a lot of these proactive measures that they've been working on over the course of this summer that have now come to fruition. And then finally, we are in the process of awaiting whether or not we are going to receive a grant. Kristin Holheisel, and again, the team, have been applying for grants that you may have been aware of through MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, with regard to safety in our buildings. And so we've applied for several of those based on needs that have come about. From the last thing I'll share, which is, we're really feeling like we're leading the way with Washington County Sheriff's Department in terms of how we're coordinating with them. We have several meetings with them. Our team has become really connected with Doug Burglin, who is the Washington County Emergency Management Director, and he's helping us figure out how do we best navigate how we want to be proactive about the safety in our buildings, monitor when we do have an emergency in our buildings, and then, most importantly, after something happens, how do we recover appropriately? And so there's a lot of moving parts that go into that, and we want to make sure in the size of our district and the multitude of differences in our buildings that we're doing this really well. So that's hitting on safety. And then some things that have come out of mental health, our Mental Health Collaborative. You know that Dr. George Nolan and Andy Fields are working with our Community Mental Health Collaborative. And two things that are coming soon and are in process of being in place right now at the high school are this Peer Helpers Program, where peers are helping peers. Chris Otto at the high school is really helping coordinate that, along with the Make It Okay! program, which isn't something new, but it's something that we're really trying to infuse into our high school this year and grow that into something more. So a lot of things on the safety and mental health side, new into our district that have come to fruition. And then finally, what I would leave you with is, we just want to thank the community. We had a huge outpouring of support for families in our community. As you can see on the slide, the Stuff the Bus campaign this year raised over 50 As you can see on the slide, the Stuff the Bus campaign this year raised over $15,500 for students in our group, in our district. And that is unique in that it helped us provide our first ever free school shopping experience for families in which we were able to support 90 families in a little less than 30 minutes. And we've since gotten more supplies because we ran out. So this would be a shout out to any families who are in need of anything to contact us at District Office. We have more supplies coming in. But really just a great experience for families to be able to get the supplies they need before day one and having to feel, once again, I need to ask for this. The kids get to show up on day one with the stuff. And that includes everything from individual supplies to backpacks. So we're just excited. Once again, wow, what a great start. It's been the smoothest, best start. I can't say that enough in the last four years. So thank you very much for your support. And we'll leave you with a video that Carissa and her team has put together, along with a couple of things that she wants to share.
All right, I will start the video for those of you who are at our back-to-school kickoff or if you've been on Facebook, you may have seen this video. Shout out to Chris Spikels from my team, who put this together as she has done for the last several years. It's always a fun way to start the year by looking back on what goes on in our school building. So I'll play this and give you a taste. If you can pull that up, Don.
So thanks to Carissa and her team for putting that together, but we thought it would be a great way to end. Again, just wow, what a great start. Team and alignment and we're moving in the same direction and it really feels good on our programming side of the house right now. We've got things going on. So, thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing. You know, first of all, I'm a hopeless app, so I'm crying again and it was for good reason. And I just wanted to comment that that vote on the staggered start was a difficult vote for us. It's an unknown and it's really tough to vote on something that you're not sure. You have the best intentions, but you're just not sure. So I just want to thank you all for implementing that and for everything that you do. And thank you for reminding us why we're all here. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments or anything while we're moving on here?
Just because Nate was up at the podium earlier, he's got a couple curmudgeons on his staff that I hear from when they don't like something that we're gonna do. And maybe they're the same people that stopped you in the hall, but they sent a note after this and said, "We didn't like it when you did it, but we love it now. Best start." They're both veteran teachers, but they have got to do a lot of complaining, but they sure liked the ready, set, go conferences. It made me think of, I think his name was George Coros. Was that the guy that came? And he had the comment that we need to make the positives so loud that the negatives are almost impossible to hear. And as I was hearing from those folks, I mean, I never hear from teachers at the beginning of the year about the start of the year, but they were two of the, I think, 11 teachers I heard from. And I'm thinking, why are they talking about this? And they were all veteran teachers saying, "This is the best thing we've ever done at the start of the year." I mean, when you hear it from that many, you kind of think maybe it was a smart thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are moving on. We've got Item B, props and homecoming, and that is Ms. Keister.
All right, well, my goodness, this has been a fun meeting. I can actually say that this is the most fun board meeting I have ever attended. Thank you. Again, that just reinforces the fact that there's a lot of positive energy in our district right now. You walk into our buildings, you feel it. You talk to our staff, you feel it. I, as a community member and alum of this district, a mama of a future pony, have never been more excited to be a part of the Stillwater system. So thank you for a great start. I'm gonna just keep this rolling as I talk about pony pride. Not only can you feel the energy in our schools, you can feel it in our community. I've had the opportunity the last couple of months, weeks, I guess, since I've been back from leave, to talk to some community members and they have really wanted to reach out and find out ways that they can get more involved in our schools. Some of the things we've talked about with our community is just how can they volunteer and mentor and build connections with students? They've also said, what can they do to help build that pony pride and that community spirit that I think our community is really hungry for? I remember being a kid in this community. I used to see the pony logo on the water tower back behind the Old Cub Foods when I was growing up. Now I think there's the lumberjack, which is fine, debatable, I'll talk to the mayor about that. There really is this desire to bring pony pride back to our community. It's been there, but to expand it, really from the north to the south, from the east to the west, and just make sure that everybody feels connected to and a part of the district. So we are working on that as one of our main goals for the communications department this year, but it's actually an easy one because, as you said, there's just a lot of great things going on and people are buying into this. One of the things we did at the start of the school year, when we had our staff come together, is we unveiled a campaign to recognize ponies. So ponies recognizing other ponies. We call it props. So we want to give props to our students, to our staff members, to our community members for the great things that they're doing. You have all been given one of the notepads, which we handed out to all of our staff members as well. And we challenged our staff to be on the lookout for good things that are going on in their buildings or in their community and to give a shout out or a prop to somebody. And all it takes is just ripping one of these off and filling it out. It is kind of a shout out because of something that they've done. You can check what that was. I just have to say, "You're amazing," or "You should be proud," or "You're so kind," and then you can write a message on here. These have been really popular. I'm already seeing a lot of these as I walk around the buildings. They're posted up on people's bulletin boards and I'm hearing stories of how it's really encouraging and inspiring people to just be on the lookout for the good things that are going on. And then it's also feel-good when you get one to know that you've been recognized and people are watching what you're doing and really celebrating that. So you have these as well and I challenge you to use them as you go around our buildings. Again, you can give them to students, you can give them to staff members, you can even give props to community members. If you see someone wearing a pony shirt out on the street, give them some props. That's really a fun way to celebrate all of the good things going on in the district. Speaking of, this was mentioned already in the student report, but homecoming is coming up and we are really excited to be working along with the students. This is really a student-led activity. They have a lot of things going on. I have given a calendar to all of our board members. These will also be available. You'll see them posted in our buildings and if community members want one, we'll have it online or you can just stop by Central Services and get a copy as well. But there are some amazing things going on during Homecoming Week, which is September 22nd through the 29th. A lot of them are student-focused, but there are many opportunities for the community to be involved as well. You'll see one of the first things that I'm highlighting here is Paint the Town Red and I'm going to touch on that in the next slide. So stay tuned. We also have our Senior Citizen King and Queen Coronation, which is a really fun event. This year, we're going to be at Boutwell's again. We'd been down at Croydale for a couple of years and now we're back at Boutwell. And they nominate and vote on a homecoming king and queen and we get to go with the students over there and put the crowns on their head and there's a lot of excitement and celebration around that. And then our senior royalty also get to come to the football game and be recognized there too. So that's a really fun way to get others in our community to celebrate homecoming. And finally, mark your calendar. You will not want to miss the Second Annual Homecoming Carnival. Students have been involved in planning this along with some district staff and some community volunteers and it will be bigger and better than ever. More inflatables, I think the food trucks are going to be even more popular, corn dogs and cheese curds and all that good stuff that we didn't have last time, so watch for that. We're inviting the entire community to come out from 4 until 6:30 to take part in a community celebration. Students have an opportunity to have a little bit of the carnival to themselves right after school up until 4 o'clock and then the community is welcome to come. So, doesn't matter how old you are, come on out, have a good time, play on the inflatables. There's different games. I think there might be a dunk tank, that was a huge hit last year. Even if there's not, there's lots of other fun things to play and to just come together as a community. So mark your calendar and join us for that. As I mentioned, Paint the Town Red. This has been a tradition for the high school students to go out and paint the windows of local businesses, with permission from the businesses, of course. So if you're a business who is interested in this, please look on our website. There's information about how you can be added to that list for us to come out and have students paint your windows. They actually come painted out on the Saturday, or Sunday, I'm sorry, of homecoming and then they'll come and clean the windows after the fact. We're also doing something different this year. If you are not interested in having your window painted or just want to do something different, we have Pony Pride Window Clings available. So they are an actual cling that goes on your window, kind of like you use at holidays, maybe. You can put it up on your window. And what's nice about that is it's maybe a little more professional looking if you want something that's not quite hand-drawn. But it's also something you can post all year round. You can put it up, take it down, you can use it again at a different time. So we're excited about that. We kind of unveiled it this year and we are hearing from businesses that they want these window clings. So again, go to our website if you're interested in that. And then we are challenging the entire community to wear Pony Pride on their sleeve, if you will, to really dress in their Pony Pride gear on Friday, September 28th. Local businesses are joining in the effort. I just got an email from Lake Elmo Bank that they've been doing this for the last couple of years and they're super excited again to get their staff to wear red and black. Some people pull out the old letter jackets or run over to one of their local stores to buy their pony gear. So everyone should be encouraged to do that. And if you want, take a picture with your colleagues, your families, your friends and post it with the hashtag #PonyPride and it'll be shared out on our social media as well. So again, we are really looking for the entire community to join us in celebrating Pony Pride for homecoming, but all year round as well. And with that, I'm just going to end with a quick little promo commercial, a video, if you will, commercial to promote homecoming. So I'll just play that quick and we'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion, comments, or questions for Ms. Keister? No?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All righty, moving on. We've got the school board meeting calendar, 2018, location and format. So given the, kind of the change in the agenda tonight, I'll just give you kind of a brief reminder. We discussed this at the previous meeting a little bit, but basically how the calendar conversation went with regards to changing the school board meeting day. Superintendent Pontrelli and I had, it started with a casual conversation and discussing, you know, a lot of the activities that occur on Thursday nights. And there were previous board members, current board members, who had missed quite a few meetings due to, missed quite a few of their child's events due to the meetings on Thursday nights. That's kind of where it started. And Superintendent Pontrelli just let me know that it's not a, we don't have to have these meetings on Thursday nights. We can move them to other days of the week if we want, which was new to me. So I thought, well, let's just explore it casually and see where that goes. And I'm gonna kind of have you, Denise, if we could just piggyback a little bit here and you can fill in the details, but I will just read, kind of read this. You know, this is a bit of a recap from last week, but from the last meeting. Staff looked into which days prevented, presented conflicts with our other regularly scheduled obligations. And those would be activity schedules, taping capabilities. We checked with Don Fixmer on this as well. And also with a lot of our current obligations that we have, such as E-Mid and the like. And so the night, basically, this came up with only one night that could work other than Thursday nights, and that is Monday nights. We, in the discussion, we thought, you know, Monday might be an interesting thing to look at as it would provide possibly more opportunity for community members to attend these meetings. It's not as many conflicts with activities, as I said earlier. And it also would possibly provide more opportunity for board members, staff, and students to attend Thursday activities. Because a lot of times also even our students at the board have activities on Thursday nights. So again, all of this being said, this is really a new option to consider. If you can, we can raise this for comments or questions. We don't have to do this. And again, this isn't going to be an action item until the next meeting. And reason being, it was a cart before the horse upon hearing that Stillwater, the City Hall cannot house Monday night meetings anyway. So that's the reason for even moving this action item to next week, just out of, you know, fairness, so we can weigh this in the next two weeks and then subsequently vote on it two weeks later. So Denise, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that or?
No, I think you covered everything for us administratively, Monday, Thursday, it doesn't matter. So there's really not anything that impacts us. It's really about what the board wants and what works best for the board and the community.
Director, let's go with Mr. Abdul.
I do believe that Thursdays would be ideal, just because you mentioned we have activities, but also most of our tests are actually on Friday. So having that Thursday night to be able to go over information, anything that we needed to do for that Friday test would be nice. And we can be able to delegate throughout the week what we have to do, so.
So, just to clarify, so Thursdays, would it be better or?
Sorry, Mondays would be better.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. I appreciate that. Director Lachlan?
No, I just wanted to really hear what the students had to say. Anecdotally, I had heard the same thing, that often tests are on Friday and Thursday is a critical night to study and just would like to hear the students' perspective.
So thank you for what you can. Nikhil, anything or not? No pressure on this, no pressure.
No, I also agree with what Abdul had to say, that teachers unfortunately base their curriculum around testing near the end of the week because they base the information through Monday through Thursday. And so I also agree, Monday nights would be very helpful for us as students to help us structure how we plan our week.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this agenda? Any other comments or questions on this agenda item? Again, this is going to be placed as an action item next, at our next meeting. So just wanted to make sure everyone is on board with that, understands that. I believe we're going to move on here to Item D, and that is the Facility and Financial Considerations of Oak Park and Brookview. This will be a board discussion, and we will be starting with Denise Pontrelli.
Thank you. For those of you who are new to this conversation, or haven't had the luxury of having some of the past history, I'm going to read a little bit of that for you. One of our speakers tonight spoke about some of the boundary and capacity issues that have happened in the past, so this is to give a little bit more context for you. Board members have requested to have a conversation about the possible expansion of Brookview Elementary, and raise the question of reopening Oak Park Elementary. We'll be sharing some information with you shortly, but before we begin the presentation, I want to reinforce that our recommendation as district leaders remains unchanged, and the data to support it remains unchanged also. As a district, we have made difficult decisions, but we've also seen the benefits we predicted. You heard more about this from our principals and staff earlier this evening. The direction we established three years ago is working, and we do not recommend deviating from the plan in place. Expanding Brookview is part of that plan. The board and public will remember, we talked about expanding Brookview at the time of the 2015 bond. Right up to the start of construction, the School Board and administration inquired about the possibility of adding on to the building, but our request was denied by the Department of Education. In large part, the Department of Education told us that we needed to occupy the building before we could change the plan. This need has not changed. The only thing that was really changed is that the development in that area is happening faster than we even expected, or that the city expected. Reopening the school is not part of that plan. We do not have the need to reopen a building, nor do we have the general fund dollars to support reopening a school. In fact, we're currently anticipating a 2.5 million budget deficit. The real question for the board to address in the coming months is how to cut the general fund operating budget. Now is not the time to make decisions to further increase spending unless we have a clear plan of what we'll do to make up the difference. Lastly, moving Central Park to Oak Park is and has long been a part of our plan. This should not have come as a surprise. The idea of moving Central Services to an existing building was first brought up by the Long Range Facility Planning Task Force in 2014, and was outlined in informational materials for Bond 2015. Oak Park was identified as a viable location as part of the bold discussions at board meetings on December 17th, 2015, January 7th, 2016, and March 3rd, 2016. In addition, the respondent briefed an addendum for the closure of schools indicated this in several places with the same intention. In a board update this past May, I informed board members that we are working on the timeline and process of moving Central Services staff to Oak Park, as well as creating a space for board meetings to be held, which is something that has been requested. I heard no concerns from board members at that time. We look forward to reviewing the information on this topic with you and hearing the School Board's discussion. Finally, I've been asked about a timeline for the possible expansion of Brookview. If the board should decide to move ahead with that expansion, we would need to request RFPs for a financial advisor, architect, and construction management. This process would need to be complete by December, so we could start the planning process in January and be ready to welcome students and families for the 2020 school year. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Heisel and Director McDowell to share the presentation and the information with the board as a reminder, most of this is not new information. Go ahead.
Board Chair Pelletier and School Board. So tonight, Ms. Heisel and I will be talking through Facility and Financial Considerations for Oak Park and Brookview as a report. Really, the purpose is twofold for tonight. One is to share information based on questions and requests that we received from School Board members to this point, specifically to review the demographics that we have currently, and the immediate facility needs based on those demographics as they explain it, provide considerations for what would be considered an expansion of Brookview Elementary School, and then provide considerations for reopening Oak Park. The last part of the presentation is simply a time for a board to have a discussion amongst itself after we review the information that we have. So I'll start off by just going through the enrollment projections, and reminder that these are out to five years. So these are based off of, if you remember, Dennis Cheeseborough came and presented in April of last year, based on a March document that we all have, the demographics report, and that is sourced at the bottom of the slide to which all of you have. It's the same document, I guess is my point. There isn't any new information to that document. And in that document, it speaks to the fact that in the next five years, so just out to '22, '23, what we're expected to see, based on the projections in that document, is a little under a 2% decrease in enrollment. So about 157 kids. And so the one thing I would point out from the projections in the document, and even back to the first presentation tonight, right? There's a difference in number there from day one to day, to what this says, is one is, these numbers, as Teamworks International, the company that did that with Dennis Cheeseborough, they're only tracking kindergarten through 12th grade. They're not tracking our early childhood kids as part of the projection, and they're not tracking the 12-plus kids. So there's going to be some discrepancy in those numbers. And I point that out because that was some of the questions that we got, was, wait a minute, why doesn't this number jive with this number? And that question made sense. So that's one thing to keep in mind there. There are several differences about that. The second thing to keep in mind is, in that packet, if you have it with you, on page 46 of that document, is where it explains, there's a Table 10C at the bottom. It explains that the demographic projections in this document are based on active developments at the time. And what is defined as an active development is a development that's in process. So for me, the way that I think about it is, the land's been cleared, and there's stakes there, and you could build a house right there. That's what makes sense to me about when active development is explained. The other thing, or the bottom part of that, is future developments. So those are developments that, as we talk with city planners, city planners, city councils might say, we're thinking about putting houses up here. But it isn't formally in a plan yet. That's a future development, as per what's defined in here. So that also then leads to some questions, right? Because if we know in our mind, for example, one of the things we're going to talk about a little bit later, is the development right next to Brookview, right? It's right there. We all know, we've had conversations, we're certain that thing's going in, and it's going to have about 240 homes. That's not a part of the projection, because it's still in future development, so you've got to add that to whatever the projection is. So hopefully that helps clarify that. That was one of the things, as I was reading through questions, like, oh, we better make sure we're all on the same page with that one. What does end up happening, though, is, in those projections, if you look at them, in the five years, what's going to happen, based on the numbers we have in the five years, and we saw it this year, is our graduating class from 2018 was larger than our incoming class of kindergarteners. So as a district, we're smaller overall, right? Because you've lost a larger number of kids than what you've taken in, based on those two factors. Unless you start factoring in where additional comes, kids come into the system. So understanding that globally, that's kind of how you figure out trending. So where we're at in these five years is, all things being equal, our high school classes right now, that are, last year through our ninth grade class, are sitting just under 700 to over 700 kids, every one of those classes. It isn't until we get into our eighth grade class, down to our fourth grade class, that we currently jump down to 600. It isn't until we get to our third grade class to kindergarten that we jump under 600, current numbers today. So that's why, when we say things like, right now, based on projections, the numbers that we have, based on active lots, what we can anticipate is that our elementary schools in the South are going to continue to see a larger enrollment. They're going to have an increase. Our schools in the North, being north of 36, are going to see a decrease. We saw that as an example this year. We have a net increase across our buildings south of 36 of about 95 kids, right now, as of the numbers that we have currently, before any of the October 1 numbers come in. And we have actually a net loss of three kids across the buildings north of 36 right now. So that's just an example of what that piece looks like, as a snapshot in time, not as the end-all, be-all, but that's kind of, if you need to get a picture in your mind of what we're talking about, when we say, it looks like the southernmost elementary schools are going to gain enrollment as we move through this. And it makes sense. We all know that the South, the southern part of the district is building out faster than the North. The things that I would suggest are things to consider beyond the five years are, what's going to happen with the middle schools if that holds true? Right? Because if the South continues to grow, and the North continues to shrink in terms of elementary enrollment, the way our feeders are set up, our two middle schools will flip-flop in enrollment. So we're going to see an increase in enrollment that looks more like what Stillwater Middle looks like at Oakland, and vice versa, because all the kids come through. The last thing that I would point out, as far as enrollment projections go, is that our high school population in the next five years is going to remain relatively stable. Like I said, we've got classes of 690-something, 7-something, 7-something, 7-something. And so if you just carry that out five years, which is the other piece of the enrollment projections to remember, is it's only a snapshot through five years, based on what was polled last December as our most recent enrollment projection. So it's a trajectory. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristen to talk through a little bit more about the funding side of things.
Thank you. District funding categories. This is a subject that I've talked about many times. I particularly like this illustration, in that it might help compartmentalize what goes where. I'd actually like to draw attention before kind of just explaining the categories of the red line that appears right after the general fund. And the reason why that is significant is that anything on the right side of that red line can't be moved to the general fund. It stays where it is. So whether it's food service, community service, building construction, they're in their particular categories. However, if you were to take the general fund bucket, you can cross that line and pour them into all of the other categories. So the general fund has the flexibility, where the other five buckets that are represented do not. Now, the general fund in particular essentially represents our day-to-day operations. It's what we pay salaries on, what we pay instructional supplies, our utility bills, our phone lines, those sorts of things. What does it cost to operate the house in any given day or year? As you move across, and I would say, capital will fall into kind of more of a constricted category, where we don't use that to pay instructional teacher salaries. You're restricted by essentially a dollar value in a term, or a shelf life, if you will, of something like a desk. If we were to buy a desk, we know that has a useful life of so many years, therefore it can go into the capital category. And I would like to point out the Building Construction Fund. Those funds are dedicated for a particular purpose, and can't be used beyond what was in the review and comment, without any sort of modification. And we had talked about that, I want to say, in March, when we were looking at the bus terminal purchase. Financial considerations. When looking at expanding Brookview, we would have a one-time facility expense to capital. Again, it pays for things like construction, buildings improvements, or to meet special criteria. There is money available from the sale of other properties that we've had. There's money that we receive every year. That would be a capital expense. It wouldn't necessarily be an operational expense. Now, if you expanded and the students moved in, you're bringing in new students, which helps support additional teachers, additional staffing. However, when you're looking at reopening Oak Park as an elementary, that is an ongoing, and that's important, it's ongoing annual expense to the general fund. Every year, that dollar amount will move forward as part of our conversation that we have, where it's approximately $100 million. That's the fund that we focus on when having the discussion. I know Director Stivland has mentioned many times that we need to be having budget conversations throughout the year. I mean, this is, this is a part of that budget conversation. And then one-time expense to capital budget, which would be media center and furniture. Every one of you has toured Oak Park. If you were to make that an elementary school, again, you can see, like, for example, the bookshelves are gone, and the books are gone. We would need to replace that to get that to be a functional media center for an elementary school. So that's what that means. There's certain areas that would need to be filled in.
I think there have been some questions, and I have questions too, that can't you, couldn't you argue that there are operating costs, no matter where the students are? If there are, if we were to add on to Brookview and have 115 more students there, aren't there going to be operating costs that would be above and beyond what the operating costs are there currently, in addition to the capital funds that it would take to add on to the building?
I'm going to respectfully ask you to hold that thought, because I get into further detail in the next few slides.
Okay.
If I don't address what you're asking in those slides, then please come back and ask me the question again.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry about that. No, 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 that's absolutely fine. I would also like to remind you that we are currently projected to have a $2.5 million deficit this year. That's where we are. We have had, we had that conversation in June of '17, when we were talking in closed session regarding parameters. We had discussed that we were at a crossroads. We had discussed what the impact of contract settlements would be, and so that number was presented in June of '17. I also would like to point out one other thing as it relates to kind of the discussion as far as Oak Park as an elementary school. Please realize, when this information is presented, we're presenting it as what it would cost to open the building. It's not addressing class size. I know that some people believe if you open a building and have more space, you automatically will reduce class size. If you view class size as an issue at a particular elementary school, you're going to see that as alleviating. I'm saying that's not what these numbers present, because that is a different financial conversation, and the reduction of class size would have a different, it would have an increased financial impact. So as we move through the numbers, please recognize, it is not addressing class size in any way, shape, or form. It is merely saying this would be, what would be the cost to open a building. Considerations for expanding Brookview. No impact to the general fund. To Director Stivland's point, wouldn't it? We have additional students there to educate. You have to add additional teaching staff to support. True. However, if you are taking kids in, back to, if you're adding kids, you're essentially assuming they don't, you know, you're not adding sections, the revenue that they generate will support the cost of hiring a new teacher. So if you have 150 new kids in, and that's another 1.5 million dollars, the staff that you'd have to support those sections would be absorbed by the increase of revenue of additional children.
We're going to wait until the end of the presentation. Thank you.
The...
Yeah, we're just going to wait.
Total costs would be $4.5 to $6 million. We had presented, and I apologize, I don't remember the exact presentation date, but we had presented possibly different options of what Brookview could look like. Mr. Drummerhausen was aware, and maybe he can recall about the timeframe. However, when we presented, it was different, it was a different number of classrooms, it was a different location, and therefore there was a dollar spread within that of what we would estimate it would cost, depending on the configuration of how many and where those classrooms would be. Costs would be offset from the sale of other properties. We do have two properties that have been sold in the district in the last few years. One is Washington School, and the other is Afton. In total, those are $1.5 million that are sitting in our capital account right now. We have a pending sale for Marine Elementary, and with all due respect, that sale, or the terms of that sale are currently confidential, so I'm not going to address a potential number with that. And then also, the potential, or the possible sale of Central Services and Withrow Elementary. Then the... Then, the remainder could be paid through a board-approved lease levy. And what this is, is it's essentially issuing debt. So, we take a one-time debt issue. And then, we would recover the money over, let's say, 15 years to help pay that debt through a lease levy. So, it would be a non-voter-approved. This mechanism was used for the Early Childhood Family Center, on how we built that. And that's how we would look forward to covering whatever the remainder of the funds is and however the board chose to use it. Considerations for reopening Oak Park. The ongoing annual expense from the general fund is in excess of $650,000. Again, this would be, you would need to, with a new elementary school, you'd need to add a principal. Where, and I hate to say "where" at Brookview, because I don't want to say it's an either-or proposition. It's just saying, there's already this staff that exists at a current elementary. To open a new elementary, you would have to add this staff, which would include a principal, secretaries, custodians, nurse, behavioral para, student advocate, psychologist, instructional coach, and so on. Again, that's to get the doors open before we start saying how many sections and how do they fit within the class size conversation. And again, the one-time expense to capital. Potential increase, or increased potential for multi-grading. And this is, I'll use this explanation. We have had multi-grading in the past. Let's say that we had 30 kids at a particular elementary school, and we opened up Oak Park, and now we have 15 at one and 15 at the other. Well, the board's range on class size isn't 15. So, if you have one section in kindergarten, or one section in first grade, that's 15, and one section in second grade, that's, you know, if it carries forward, you very easily could be looking at multi-grading, because you don't have the numbers that even fit within the board-approved range. And if you chose to go outside of the range, now you're talking additional cost, and that's the class size conversation. And then, the displacement of students and staff currently at Oak Park. As we've heard earlier, there is the 18- to 21-year-old transition program. There is YCAP, which is the alternate to suspension programs and special education staffing. The one thing, based on my comment before, of if we have new students, it creates new revenue, which helps support additional staff. This model would, would there be new students? I mean, absolutely. New students generate revenue. If you're just splitting students in two different buildings, that doesn't generate new revenue. That's part of revenue that already exists for us. Considerations for reopening Oak Park. Again, another major consideration, and we've already heard at least part of the concern earlier tonight, would be the school board-approved boundary plan. When we went through that process under the guiding change document from the school board, the committee was charged with efficient utilization of the district facilities, balanced enrollment at the elementary schools, and for the middle school program, and keeping neighborhoods together. It positioned us for our current needs, and the goal was to minimize future changes. At the committee level, we had talked about, we would ideally like to get students through their particular grade levels, as far as five years. You know, we get kids, you know, in kindergarten through elementary school, they're on to secondary, and then if there's a boundary change, that was the goal. The committee also recognized at that time that the south was growing, and that that might not hold true for certain pockets in the south, just because of the growth that they might need to be shifted. If you were to switch boundaries, it would impact hundreds of families K-8, and you would possibly be looking at splitting up your feeders to the middle school. So, that was a conversation we had had at the board level when we went through the boundary process, was, was it a consideration to keep your elementary schools intact, feeding to your middle schools? And if the population were to change, or students were to be spread differently, the likelihood of being able to keep those feeders is less.
So, just for us to kind of close out, the information to lead into the discussion. We sat down and tried to push everything through, that kind of triad of what's desirable, feasible, and sustainable, to try and help you with your discussion. And looking at the two, not, again, as Kristen pointed out, not up against one another, but for each one, if we were to look at expanding Brookview, what's the desire, what are the desirable things about that? It addresses the enrollment growth in the south. There isn't necessarily an operating budget impact that we foresee. It maintains our current boundaries as they're set, and it maintains what we consider to be efficient utilization of our facilities. It's feasible, because the school is built for expansion. We knew this. We knew back when it was all being planned. That was, that was part of the discussion, as has been pointed out. We actually tried to see if it were possible, but weren't able to, due to MDE restrictions. And then, is it sustainable? It does seem to be sustainable, because it's a one-time facility expense on the capital budget, not on the operating budget. And then, again, as you can see in the slide, if we, if we look at the reopening of Oak Park, yeah, it does utilize a building the district already owns. You know, that is, that's always a desirable thing. It saves those capital dollars that, on the opposite side of expanding Brookview, you're not spending that large amount of capital dollars. It does, however, require that we're going to have to have a boundary change. And on the flip side of the capital, is it takes a significant, it will cause a significant hit to an already $2.5 million deficit in our operating budget. So, that's what we foresee as considerations with regard to desirable, feasible, and sustainable.
All right. Thank you. I'm sure we have a lot of questions. I just wanted to first turn the conversation to Director Haveland, who had a comment that he would like to make.
Thank you. I just want to, first of all, thank the school district for 26 years as a principal at Stillwater Junior High School, and two national schools of excellence that that staff and students earned. And I have also had the opportunity to be an assistant superintendent for a year here, while the existing superintendent, assistant superintendent was on leave, to improve some technology skills. And also, I want to mention, Mark Drummerhausen was one of the students at Stillwater Junior High School. He was never a problem. He was, he was a plus. And the, one thing I'm doing, so that you know, I'm visiting every school in the district and spending time with the principal, and also talk to some students, if possible, and some teachers, and see their programs. Because a lot of times, a lot, quite often, as we look at something, our frame of reference is when we went to school. And I can tell you right now, the schools that I have visited so far, they're absolutely fantastic. They're doing things that we never even thought of doing. And so, that brings me to the reason I want to talk to you too, because I was called by Channel 5, and was asked some questions about my stand on educational issues. And the one question I was asked was, are you in favor of reopening Oak Park Elementary? My answer was, I haven't, I don't have enough information to know how that's going to impact all our students. And I'm not going to make that decision until I get a lot more information than I have now. And unfortunately, the reporter said I was in favor of closing, opening it. That's not true. I don't, I don't operate that way. I want to know its impact. There are programs in our middle schools and high schools that have team teaching, where five subjects or four subjects are taught by a team of teachers, 150 students a day, with the same common planning period. And that, that is one of the reasons that the schools here are so good, that they are using interdisciplinary teaching and tying the subject areas together. So, I just wanted to clarify, I did not say that. I will make that decision once I see what its impact will be on outstanding programs in our current schools. And as I've said this many times, the two most important things in a school district are the teachers and the students. And the teacher has to be better as the day goes along, because the students, as the day goes along, they get more tired. And that requires a lot of support for teaching staff. And so, I think we need to really be aware of what class size, because that's the key. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Director Hapner.
Thank you, Don.
Just as, as part of this discussion, I think we all got information from Superintendent Pontrelli about things that we could take a look at that had been talked about in previous reports or board presentations. And I just went through that list.
Sure.
And just wanted to point out some things that had been talked about since 2014, related to both Brookview and Central Services Building and Oak Park. November 13 of 2014, the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee report to the Board of Education, November of 2014. The Facility Committee recommends balancing enrollment and building capacity district-wide, and considering repurposing space. Some options to consider were to repurpose Central Services Building and move support staff to existing buildings, repurpose leased spaces, and sell the Central Services Building. In the spring of 2015, the Long Range Facilities Planning information that came to the board said that we should address the growth and underutilization of schools. The committee recommended the following to address our capacity issues. Better utilize space in schools that feed into Stillwater Junior High School at that time, by repurposing existing buildings, eliminating leased spaces, and/or selling the Central Services Building. In December of 2015, when BOLD was first presented to the school board, there were additional considerations in addition to the school closings performed. One was boundary adjustments. Two was to move the West Campus, which meant move ALC in transition. Three was the potential relocation of Central Services. Four was the sale of real estate property. And five was the future growth and expansion of the new elementary school. In January of 2016, the recommendation was presented to the board to close Marine, Oak Park, and Withrow. And additional facility considerations to be done in consultation with the board was relocation of programs. Gate to Stillwater Junior High School, the Autism Cluster to Rutherford. The ALC and 18- to 21 transition program at that time was to be determined. The sale of Central Services, Marine, Withrow, and Washington, or the New Heights Building. The repurposing of Oak Park to Central Services, and the expansion of the new elementary to 600 students. This was in January of 2016. In March of 2016, a final report to the board, which reviewed the process, the statement was potentially moving the Central Services Building into underutilized school space. Better utilize the space by repurposing the buildings and moving leased spaces, were recommendations from the Long Range Facilities Committee, which was presented to the board November 13 of 2014. In about Oak Park, that report said, it is a centrally located building, and at more than 63,000 square feet, it edges out other buildings as a viable option for relocation of Central Services. In addition to Central Services, Oak Park would have space for additional community-based or specialized program. And I wanted us to review that, because those were the presentations that were made to the board over that year-and-a-half period from November of 2014 through March of 2016. And then, the second sheet attempts to talk about what's been completed, based on those previous reports and recommendations. And everything from moving part of community education to the Pony Activity Center, moving Special Ed to Oak Park, eliminating the leased spaces at the West Campus, closing Marine, Withrow, Oak Park, moving transition to Oak Park, selling the Afton real estate property, making boundary adjustments, moving Gate to Stillwater Middle, moving Autism to Rutherford, moving the ALC to the high school, selling of New Heights, and the sale of Marine School, which is in process at the current time. Discussions to be held, and decisions that still need to be made, based on previous reports and recommendations, including the selling of Central Services, the expanding of Brookview to 600 students, the repurpose of Oak Park as Central Services Building, the selling of the Withrow School, and creating community-based or specialized programming at Oak Park. Nowhere in the reports or recommendations was it suggested that we reopen Oak Park School. And frankly, the first time I heard about that was in the KSTP report. So, I give this to us as just kind of a historical look at what was suggested in reports or presentations that the board received, what we've done to this point, the decisions that we said we needed to make, and hopefully, we can kind of work our way through some of these discussions to be held and decisions to be made.
Jim?
Thank you.
Director Patachek.
Yes. I've spent a good portion of my life teaching history. It's very important to me, and I'm concerned about how information is derived. What you have given us here is a selection of facts. Are those refuted? What is the context? Where were they taken? Couple of important things. Number one, I would encourage anyone who has access or doesn't have access to look at the original long-range plan and see if this is in fact selective revelation. We have members in this community who were members of that long-range plan. So, some of the accounts of what was in there and wasn't in there, I think, are argumentative. Let's put it that way. Secondly, if you look at your first November 13 report, it says options to consider. It doesn't say recommended options. Now, as I follow that, because I've lived through that, as several other board members here have, is generally, the board supported a lot of those in the years. There were also, in 2016, in November, there was an election, and the board membership changed. And it went from a normal 5-2 split to a 4-3 split. In 2018, several months ago, the board made another change. One member moved on to another opportunity. In 2019, nobody here doubts that. The board makeup is going to change. We have different candidates. We have a different match right now. We are 3-3 with one possibility who wants more information, and quite frankly, so do I. I don't know what the board makeup is in 2019. I can give you predictions. I can give you hopes. I can give you wishes. But I don't know what that's going to be. I have trouble with assuming that it's going to be the same, or all of these have to be written in granite, and it's the only way to go. My biggest question is, similar to Mr. Haveland's, I want more information. We had a presentation tonight. I heard, and I think I understand, where the administration would like to go. The real question, I think, is going to be decided in November 6, 2018. And it's going to depend, in many cases, on who is selected and who's not. I do have a little bit of trouble with some of the things that were said tonight, and I have lots of questions on those. But I'm saying, I think that's legitimate. I think that's part of democracy. I think that's part of how boards ought to work. I think this community will get involved, will get engaged, and I think that's healthy. Thank you.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, Director Hapner? Did you... Did you, where did you get that information from?
Well, we all got it.
No, from this, the historical?
Superintendent Pontrelli.
Information is from presentations that have been presented since 2014. And then also some of it, so you can go and look online if you'd like to, but then the other piece that we referenced was the respondent brief and addendum that has all this that I'll be read during the school closures. And that's where it says several times about Central Services moving to Oak Park. The final, as I mentioned to you, is Section 19. Oak Park is one of the larger-sized buildings in the school district which can accommodate the needs of Central Services with additional room for community-based and specialized programs. It's also centrally located and easily accessible. You know, I want to make a comment, and then I won't let the Board have the discussion. I understand that there is a real possibility that, you know, we have four Board members who won't be here, who have, or at least three, one running. And I understand that. But deeper that we seem to continue to discuss with the Board is we're currently $2.5 million deficit spending. So even if we all agreed that Oak Park was the best thing to do and open that elementary again, we don't have the money to do it. So from an administrative perspective, we need to get down and do the work, and we're scheduled to do that next September 27th, to really look at what are your priorities and what do you want? Your direction as a school district, we carry out as an administration. I think we do it really well. But you have to decide what that's going to be. And it's not about opening or closing a school or expanding. It's how do you use your resources for kids?
I'd like to...
Thank you. Some of mine will be to the Board and just some to the community as the dreaded Board member who spoke to the news. There are a number of building staff members in this room that I have deep respect for, that I think do a fabulous job. I'm thrilled the start of the school year was as good as it was. It was for my kids, too. I heard nothing about the buses. I heard nothing bad from any of my kids or anybody else. That's not what this is about for me. So I need you all to know that I deeply respect the work that you do. The issue is that I and the rest of the Board are accountable to the community. And I feel like I can't just be okay with what has really just been given to us as this is what's happening, and it hasn't come to us as a Board discussion. I can't say with 100% certainty that is the best decision. And I may never be able to say with 100% certainty. But there are so many things that I still need to have answered, and we haven't had a discussion at the Board table about whether that's the best decision. And there were only two reasons that I was willing to talk to the news, which it's actually probably hurt my reelection, so I would say that's not why I would do that. But it's happened too many times where I feel like we haven't been able to have a discussion, where things have happened more to us instead of us being able to talk about that. And I, a lot has gone on that we haven't talked about. That's been very difficult. And I can say there is no one in this district who wants healing more than I do and has sought it more than I have. And it is still what I want. And I apologize if talking to the news didn't help that. It is absolutely what I want. And regarding this, I don't think the News said that four Board members want to open Oak Park. I think it said that we wanted to have a conversation. And there are, we haven't given demographic information, but I want to hear from the cities on their 2040 plans. And I want to hear about neighborhood turnover, which we haven't thought we've been able to predict, but there might be some tools out there where we can predict that somewhat. I want us to have that conversation together as a Board. Because for me, it's not about whether I want to open Oak Park next year or in three years. It's am I willing to take that completely off the table forever? Because once we don't have an administrative building, we can't go back on that. So that's what, that's where I feel like we need to be. Because I want us to do the best we possibly can for our students in the most fiscally responsible way that we can. That's how I take being accountable to the community. And I feel like I'm not there yet, and I feel like we need to have that conversation. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, thank you. I absolutely concur with everything you just said, Shelley. And I appreciate too, George, that you shared with us the history of this conversation. I do want to make sure that we value that history and that this has been sort of something that people have talked about. I think the thing that's different for me is that I feel like a decision that's as big as this decision of moving our administrative offices into an empty elementary school, that lots of people are still feeling a tremendous amount of pain and sorrow for losing. It's a big deal, and we need to go through a very thorough process and invite the community to be a part of that process so that we can all share in that experience and really understand all of the pros and cons and the components that are going into it. To me, this was something that just kind of got foisted upon us out of nowhere. At us, I mean, as a Board and as a community, it just, I know it's been sort of rumbling around there, and it's in your document that you share there, but to me, I was waiting for an official conversation, an official Board process, and an official Board decision regarding what happens to Oak Park. We spent a ton of time talking about what is happening with Marin Elementary School. I assume we will be spending as equal amount of time, if not more, on what happens with Withrow. I think that we owe our community an extraordinary effort to make sure that we're doing the right thing with that building, which is a huge, beautiful asset to this community. So having said all that, I have another concern that has been rumbling in my head for quite a long time. We've talked about declining enrollment, declining enrollment, and I understand that for a long time, we did have declining enrollment. But if you look very closely at the numbers from 2013 and going forward, we're seeing growth in family sizes. We're seeing growth in the community. Everywhere you go in this district, you see new homes. And if you look at, just a simple Google search, Washington County population by 2040 is expected to go up by 130,000. Okay? Lake Elmo alone on their website shows about 2,000 new homes already approved. 2,000 new homes. By far and away, those are in our district. So if you figure there are 2.7 people living, average, the average amount of people living in a home today is 2.7. Think about how many people that is. It's nearly 9,000 people. Hazel Reinhardt gave us the statistics that in any, based on the population, 0.29 of the total population is school-aged children. So if you do the math, it ends up being around 3,000 students by 2040. Half of that by 2030. It takes a long time to build a school. We need to plan ahead. We need real data. We need real conversation. I can't go with all of this teamwork, you know, where they've given us all these beautiful pictures and everything. I want to talk to the real people on the front lines and actually include the conversation, include the community in the conversation, and take our time to make sure we get this right.
I would like to...
We're going to need this building. At some point in the next five to 10 years, we are going to need this building as an elementary school. I have no doubt in my mind. One more additional piece I will add. Stillwater, the city of Stillwater, where we say there's no growth. Okay? They, oh, I gotta find my sheet here. There are 26% of our homes have at least one person living in them that are over 65 years old. You know what that means if you're a real estate agent? That home is probably going to sell sometime in the next five years. And who's going to buy it? A new family who's going to come in and bring their children and rejuvenate the community. And it's already happening. You talk to people all over Stillwater. You talk to people even in places like Lakeland, same thing. There's turnover. And we heard that from Dennis Cheesebrough as well, that the turnover of populations can happen quicker than the development of new homes. And I'm sorry, I have one more thing. When I, when we talk about what's happening at Brookview, the development in Brookview, we've been told we want to add space for that school to have 150 kids in it. Right now, the building supposedly holds around 450. We want to add on a wing to make it 600. That's 150 kids. When I look at the numbers and talk with people in Woodbury, within five years, we will have nearly 300 kids, when I use the same statistics that I just shared earlier. Nearly 300 kids. A 150-person wing is not going to be enough. So obviously, the point being, we don't have enough good information, and we need to take our time. We may need a whole new building. I think I've taken enough time, but here's my point. Here's my point. I would like to make a proposal. I would like to make a motion that we put a moratorium on any plans to move our administrative offices into a perfectly beautiful elementary school that we may very well need until the Board and the community has had enough time to really consider all the facts. We need to take our time and make sure we get this right.
Actually, we have not gotten done with the discussion yet. And, excuse me. We have not gotten done with the discussion yet. I have a lot of the same questions that you have, so I would ask that you respect your Board members and let us all ask our questions, and we can move on after that. And with that, I did have a question that was kind of in the back of my mind with regards to Oak Park. If we were to move the administration over to Oak Park, as was been in discussion phases for a few years now, a concern that I've had is keeping that school in case we need it again, to be honest with you. And so my, so my big concern is we're going to move all of our offices over there, and that's it? And we don't have the opportunity anymore to open that school if we need to, because it is, it's a lovely school. So I guess I would like to, you know, just your feedback on that. I don't know who can answer that question, but...
Several of us can.
Okay.
One of the things that I think is important is there's an assumption that we wouldn't love to have that school open also. If I had a school, if we had developments up by Marin, Withrow, anywhere where I thought that was going to happen in the next five to seven years, then we'd make that recommendation.
Yeah, just please, I have, I will not hesitate to stop this meeting. Okay? Please stop.
So I think there's an assumption, and we would love to have that. When people talk about moving all of our administrative offices, yes, we have many wonderful people who work in communication, transportation, finance, food service, community ed at the District Services Center that need a place to go, obviously, if we sell the building. The plans that we've had are to do minimal things to that building, including the remodeling that we're talking about is five classrooms. People who right now have privacy, their own offices, are going to be moving into classrooms with other people to try save money, to not make large changes to what that building would look like. So we agree and would love to have that. I would love to say that in five years, we're going to have that school filled up again with over 400 students. Over 400 students is what we need to be able to pay for that building to maintain itself.
Let's do it. We have them.
You know, and there's a few other things, you know. As much information as you need, Hazel Reinhardt, I am sometimes frustrated when our state demographers and people who work in this all the time, you heard Tom Voight speak earlier, they are experts. They have given us their information. Washington County, the city of Woodbury, Lakeview Hospital commissioned a study that all match ours. So I think it does behoove us, if you need more of the experts to come in. But talking to people in the community, they aren't experts many times generally. The people that are giving this information are experts, and we're trying to bring you the best information that we can. So, you know, the minimal remodeling, I think, is important for people to know. Doing something to five classrooms is not a huge thing. The other piece is why we had that conversation is we would love to have that school reopen. We can easily find another office building to put us in. So being able to access up to $1.5 million to put into other projects, we think, is important. But I think most of the people who are here today who have an office in Central Services would say hallelujah if we don't have to move. So I think let's reframe what the narrative around this is. Instead of making it a, you know, well, administration wants to do this. We want to do the best thing for our kids. That's it.
Director Lockman.
So I appreciate that my fellow colleagues spoke their truth, and I would like a chance to say, to speak mine as well. So I think that one thing that's really important for all of us to remember is that when you look on our website, and I would actually encourage those candidates who are running to make sure you check yours as well, please. We are Stillwater Area School District. All right? We have an obligation to serve and take care and educate each and every child who are in our boundaries, who add immense and rich value, every student does, regardless of where they live. So I just, I think I need to just remind us of that. There's a phrase that says, "What you focus on grows." And it's incredibly disappointing to me to see, after hearing from our staff, hearing from our students, having students appear, where many of my colleagues seem to be coming from a very deficit mindset. Absolutely. If we continue to reopen the wound and say what's not working and why the administration is failing us and why we're getting data that we don't agree with, even though it is real data, and then for people to suggest that, oh, this was just foisted upon us? I'm sorry, that's fake news. All of these, all of this information has been substantiated. Please go back through the records, back through the tapes. You'll see it yourself. I feel like that there's this conditional pride and support that we have based on who we're talking about. I've disagreed with many things in the district since I've been on the school board and as a parent before. And I feel like there's a certain protocol and a certain process that we can follow to have robust conversations. I completely agree with you, Director Stivland, absolutely. We need to have those conversations. But we do not need to do it in a way that undermines the credibility and the integrity of this district. We do nothing to advance our mission and goals for our students when we appear fighting against each other and we are questioning the work of our administration. There are ways to question that do not call into their integrity, their credibility, and their expertise. You know, to Dr. Patachek's question, I would say, yes, you're absolutely right. Every two years, we have a new Board. Does that mean then we just wait every two years until we make a decision and when we abdicate our responsibility? Let's go back to decisions that were made when Mr. Hufflin was principal. We have to continue to move forward. I think that Mr. Hufflin's appointment to the Board was one of the best things that's happened to our district. He has the history, the historical knowledge, and he has a vision and a progressive view toward the future, because that's what our students need and that's what our students deserve. So I think that as all the questions that come up, I welcome them, and yes, I hope they, we can have that discussion. But as Board members, I believe strongly that we are ambassadors for this district. And if we cannot support one another to support our students, then I feel like we are doing a tremendous disservice. That does not mean everything is perfect. I am not suggesting at all. Are there improvements to be made? Absolutely. Can each and one of us push ourselves and push one another to be held accountable so our students are getting exactly what they need? You bet. But we can do that in a way that does not attack or undermine or compromise the integrity of this excellent, amazing district.
Thank you. Hufflin?
I still want to come back and say, if you go to, for example, Stillwater High School, one of the largest high schools in the state, the most important thing in any school is the student and class size. And were they, for example, at Stillwater High School, there are interdisciplinary teams. If a team has five teachers, they all have the same common planning period, they all have the same students, it's the equivalent of a school within a school of 150 students. You're not getting lost in a huge crowd. And you have to make a decision as to whether or not... And you have to make a decision as to whether or not you want to put the money for students and hire teachers, or you want to do something else that will increase class size and destroy programs. We got programs we should have. Our foreign language programs. What's our greatest trading partner right now, the ones that we have to prepare our college graduates for? Do they teach Chinese at Stillwater High School? No, they should. If they want to prepare our students for the future, we have to look to the future and then realize that the two key elements always are teachers and students. Administrators, they're spare tires. And I think that the job of an administrator is to support the teachers and keep the class sizes down. If that doesn't happen, it doesn't matter where the buildings are or what's happening. If that isn't the primary reason, you're not going to be as good as you could be. And I just think that if we just keep that in mind, go visit some of these schools and see what these teams of teachers are doing. Unbelievable. You go to Stillwater High School and you notice that they're preparing students for the future. We need to control class sizes. Anytime we add a building, we get principals that are paid too much. Sorry, Mark. And the support staffs that go along with them. Any addition in funding for a school district should go to class size and students and program. We have exemplary programs that no other school districts and probably in the country has. Our fine arts program, probably the best anyplace. We have students that have been in our teams. One who became the chief of staff for President Obama was a graduate of Stillwater High School. We have a student who was in music, became a composer, solos with some of the best orchestras in the world. We have all kinds of people that have really excelled because, first of all, the teachers created that interest. That's what I want to protect. That's the most important thing in anyplace. Doesn't matter what else we do. Because if we fail there, we fail not only there, but we fail in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Director Pearson.
I just wanted to ask, I have a fellow question. It's Director L. Lockman. Oh, no, it's fine. So you made a comment that we are the Stillwater area, which we all know. So who do you think is not treating it as the Stillwater area?
A lot of comments that have been very disheartening to see, both online and even in just some letters, one is most recent today, suggesting that some members of this community, of our Stillwater area school district, independent school district 834, don't have the same worth or the same right to be here as others.
But I think you made quite an accusation in saying that maybe some of us don't. Because I will say that I have been asking about Lake Elmo for at least three years and that facility. I want to make sure we're doing what's right at Brookview and not adding on too little. So I think to make that, you need to be careful when you make accusations like that.
It's not an accusation. That's how I said, that was my perception. That was my perception, and you are entitled to your opinion. I'm entitled to mine. You may just have to agree to disagree in how we see that.
And the other thing I'd like to just comment on is that you're right, that we can't support one another if we are not being intentional. And I think that includes how we're conducting ourselves in public with what we send to people. And I think that goes for all of us, to make sure that we're upholding each other at all times. And so just, I'll just leave that at that. And then the last thing is that it's simply not true that any of us view the district negatively. Every one of us is here because it's a great district and because we want the best for this district.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think we're getting grossly off topic right now, so I just want to reel it back in, if we could, to any financial considerations with facility with regards to the report tonight. And also want to make a note that this is most certainly going to continue into the next board meeting when we have more in-depth financial conversations. So we are certainly having those conversations. But if we have questions to ask of staff, that would be a nice place to go. Director Patachik.
And commenting on Superintendent Pontrelli, and I completely agree, we're looking at a $2.4, $2.5 million deficit. I think we have to look at that regardless of what happens with the other and say, okay, how are we going to achieve that? And so I look forward to that discussion. It's not unrelated, because it will affect those others as well.
So is that a request to have that brought up at the next meeting?
Well, I'm not sure at the next meeting. What I look for and would hope happens out of this meeting is perhaps asking board members what questions, and some of those are hard questions. I mean, three years ago, four years ago, we had an 11.2% fund balance. Today, we're looking at a shortage of $2.5 million. What happened in between?
Well, we don't, we still have, it's not a, we still have, your board policy is $5 million. We still have that percentage. It's dipping in.
Yeah. But all I'm saying, that's the kind of question. It's a hard question. And at times, certain board members say, gee, that's our fault. And I'm saying, perhaps it is. I voted in opposition a lot of times on spending issues, and sometimes I've supported those. But I think those are the kinds of questions, and I'm sure anybody sitting up here has different questions that would cast light on the present situation, and hopefully we could build on those for the future.
Director Hapner.
And to that point, I think we would be naive to not look at Brookview regardless of what we do with Central Services or Oak Park. Brookview is going to be, need to be expanded for the population that's coming in in Woodbury. I don't think there's any, buddy, that any demographer anywhere is going to say, well, no, Woodbury is going to stop growing. So I think you're basically looking at probably three issues. You're looking at, do we expand Brookview? Do you reopen Oak Park? Do you sell Central Services? And as much as you might say, well, the three go together, and tangentially, they might, but Brookview may need to be expanded regardless of what you do with the other ones. And to your point earlier, Director Patachik, I felt a little bit like Merrick Garland when you were talking about the election, because I'm on the board for another three months anyhow, and I don't think I just sit back and say, well, let's see how the next election comes out before we take any difficult votes. I want to be part of any difficult votes. So I just want to make sure that we aren't saying, well, there's an election coming up, let's push off any tough stuff until, and we can stick it on those people. I want you to stick it on me to make a tough decision.
Thank you. Director Stivland.
Just a couple of comments. One, Denise, I appreciate that you said earlier that you would be willing to look at, you know, what it would take to reopen Oak Park and what kind of a timeline. I mean, that is exactly what I think we need to look at, and we need to take our time to make sure we do that. But the problem I have is that you've said in the presentation tonight that the sale of CSB would go towards the addition of Brookview. So I don't know why we need to do it that way. I think we need to treat these things all separately, and we need to consider all the options. We need to really look at our data, and we need to have these deep and thorough conversations about what is happening and what really do, what are the possibilities? What options do we really have? Let's do it together as a board and with administration and share that process and really come to a decision that everyone can feel good about. And that's in response to what you said, Paula. I agree with you. Nobody wants to make a statement about something that turns into something that seems like you're making someone else look bad. That's absolutely not the case. That's the reason why we need the process, that we're all included in, and we get all the information on the table and we share in the journey, instead of saying, okay, well, here's what we're going to do, without really doing that ahead of time, then everyone's like, wait, wait, we're doing what? Huh? How did this happen? And then we're in this situation where we're not really on the same page and we didn't take the time to get there together. That's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for an opportunity for us to really share all these experiences together, mostly because I really do think that we are really going to need to be very careful about what's happening in the next five years and 10 years in this district. And I want to make sure that we get it right, that we're ready, and that we can respond to what's happening in our community and that we really do understand it. And we're working with our community partners, all of the city councils and all of the, you know, city planners that are out there. I mean, they have really good information on the front lines. You know, yeah, I just really think we need to make sure we do that.
I would just like to interject. Could you speak to that? Because I do believe that that's been part of the discussion for quite some time, that you've been working with city planners. Could you just maybe speak to that, please?
Or not, but... We can speak to it. I guess I struggle with...
If you just clarify.
I'd clarify a couple of things. One, I'm struggling with some generalizations that are being made. One, that we're not working with city planners, which we are, which we have been and continue to, it's where we're getting the information. So if that is the experts that we're talking about, we're in that. The second piece is with regard to demographics and enrollment. Couldn't agree with you more that you need more details than that, because you can't generalize. You can't generalize that, and we've said this since 2014, our journey along with demographers is you can't generalize. A home is not a home is not a home, and when we start talking about what it yields for kids, it doesn't work that way. The .27 that was that you referred to is no longer a .27 down in Woodbury right now. It's a .39. And that's only on a single-family home, not a town home, nothing of that. So I guess I would just offer two things. One is, please don't generalize when making comments about demographics and the questions. Second is, yes, we can give you those specifics in asking the questions as we have them based on the most current information we have. Like I said before, we're operating off of the same information that you have, the same demographic report. And I would also agree with the fact of the decision about Brookview, because if that demographic report is correct in the South Side, once that area right around Brookview specifically goes, we're looking at 240 single-family homes right there, which, to your point, Director Stivland, at a .39 yield is about 100 kids just right there. So that part of it, we got to be paying attention to, and the expectation is that that's going to be an active development, starting sometime between 2019, 2020, which means if we backwards plan to be opening the doors, we probably need a decision made on Brookview by December. Because if we don't, there won't be enough time to plan for the opening if that's what the board decides to do. So I would agree with you, we need those types of conversations, because we're going to need some decisions made. The Oak Park one is really a boundary decision. It really is. I mean, when you think about it, if you were to consider opening Oak Park, what is the impact of that outside of finances? It's a boundary decision. Are you willing to reboundry again? Because that's what it's going to take.
Thank you. Director Pearson.
So just to clarify going forward, because we'll be talking about this in two weeks, correct? So if we have things that we'd like to know, can we send those to you?
Yes.
And you send those on? And then, do we hope to get it all figured out in two weeks? Or do you anticipate that it'll take longer than that?
So that's a really good question, and thank you for asking that. I think this is a bit of a fluid situation, so I want everyone to have the opportunity to ask their questions, so we can bring them to the table with answers at that next meeting. Otherwise, it's an exercise in futility, quite honestly. So possibly, if we can all work on, you know, what are our sticking points right now? Because this meeting on the 27th is going to have major implications. It's not going to be simply about Brookview. It's going to be about a real discussion about our finances and where we are. So if you're okay with that, I will absolutely aggressively communicate any questions or concerns and as soon as possible, so they can delve into the research and so we can have a really good discussion. Okay? Director Patachik.
A question I have, and I think it's unanswered, and I've raised it several times before, when we were talking about long-term facility needs and the long-term plans, the biggest occupier or the biggest spending was toward Lake Elmo. A question I have, because I asked it of Tony and I asked it of Kristen repeatedly, does that bring us up to snuff? In other words, quality compared especially to other schools, new schools, old schools, whatever, I don't think, they didn't reassure me that was the case. In fact, it was quite the opposite. So what I'm asking for, and actually what I'm advocating for, is don't forget Lake Elmo and what it makes for an attractive, acceptable school, and what it would take. And the impression I got when talking to both of you, and I appreciate your candor, we're not there. And it doesn't look like if we don't take action here, because when you look at a capital budget, we can spend more money to bring them up to snuff. And that's what I'd like to see. There are people presently, and I know, because I've knocked on doors down there, who were very upset, they live in the area where they could see Brookview, and they had to drive by it to get to Lake Elmo. And I'm saying, I want to make that more palatable. I want their facilities to be comparable. I realize you can't make it new, but you can make it better. And I'd like to know, what would it take?
So, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Denise.
Be quick. I think it's two-part to Director Pearson's and Director Patachik's questions, that we see it as a two-part. First of all, the need to build up Brookview, you are correct. We aren't going to be able to build Brookview big enough for the South. We can only add on probably spatially about six classrooms. So talking about building it bigger, we can want that, but the plot, we aren't able to do that. So those six classrooms are 150 kids, they're going to be in that neighborhood. Secondly, is a, what we've talked about before, we need to go back and do again a long-term facility plan. I've shared with you that the 2014 long-term facility plan, in my opinion, leaving out two of the northernmost schools in that, and then not addressing the needs of Lake Elmo at the risk of doing some of the other things we did within the district, in my opinion, was not a great decision. Because yes, we do have major needs at Lake Elmo that we know need to be taken care of, and we understand that. We are in the schools every day. We know what the needs are of kids. So I think it's two-part. One is immediate because of the time issue that we have. I mean, we have to go out for, as I shared with you earlier, it's the financial advisor, it's a construction management person, it's all of those things that have to be approved that you want to use as the vendors for that. And having that done, so in January, we can start the planning. We've had people in the community ask, well, does it really take 18 months? Most of that process is a year, and Mark can confirm this, where it's working with the city planners and making sure that everything's set. It's not the actual building of the project. So it's two-part. One, addressing the Brookview, and then we need to take plenty of time to look at overall, what the needs are overall. We don't see, from what we've talked to experts in the field, that there is going to be this resurgence in the Oak Park area, but we understand that we all hope that that happens in the future. So that's why we're being very intentional about spending very few dollars and just making it work for Central Services until that would happen. And I think it's going to be more like seven to 10 years, but based on the data.
Could I just ask a question to Director Patachik's point, which I support entirely? Lake Elmo, you know, I'm going to admit my bias, but, you know, I feel like that's the consistent little engine that could school, and they continue to make it work. But, you know, possibly we can have, I know that this is a bigger discussion, but I would like to have some sort of, at least a beginning of a discussion of where Lake Elmo is going to play into our plans. I think it's incredibly important, and also was even brought up tonight at the forum with the immersion. And I know we have some acute issues with regards to making that vote for Brookview, but I really want to keep Lake Elmo top of mind as well. So if I can just put that in there.
So if I can just put that in there. Kristen Holheisel?
Thank you. As we discussed, and Director Patachuk had mentioned, the June meeting, June of 18, and then with me in July for the long-term facility maintenance, we absolutely did talk Lake Elmo and what that looks like, what I would be looking for administratively if we're looking at it independent of a long-term facility maintenance contract. And I mentioned at the time, what is the scope? I mean, because you could literally be talking, are we talking, you know, up to snuff as far as paint on walls and maybe knocking down a few walls versus a total overhaul? And to me, that, and that's a conversation, but that's, that's a, that's a big variance that administratively, we'll, we'll need some guidance on, like how, what are we, what, in the board's mind, what are you at least wanting to start at? What do you consider that to look like? Because absent that, it's hard to have any direction to move forward to even create that.
Really appreciate that, and I think that's something we need to think on.
One, one quick response, Kristen, and, and again, I appreciate your candor and your concern. When I asked both of you, what struck me, there was no hesitation. It was sort of, it needs work. So I mean, it, and I think whether it's short-term, long-term, because I, I think some of the projections are, they're going to get more kids, which I don't think is necessarily a good thing. One other thing I'd link it with too, and I just put it out there for consideration, particularly when we're talking about Oak Park, are there programs that are presently offered at Lake Elmo that could be moved to like an Oak Park? Again, just bear with me, and, and that would create spaces for other kids. Are there programs that we presently offer there? And again, I don't want an answer tonight, but that's the kind of thing I want to ponder. Because I think what's going to happen with Lake Elmo is by default, they're going to inherit a lot of kids, they got to be placed somewhere. And a lot of the needed growth isn't going to be dealt with soon enough, and, and so that's going to happen. I hope I'm wrong, but that's what I suspect.
Thank you. Director O'Loughlin?
So I think it was George that brought up that there's really three independent issues. There's whether or not to add on to the existing footprint at Brookview. There is whether or not to reopen Oak Park, and then whether or not to move Central Services, and if so, where. So I guess I'm still a little confused, because what I'm hearing the administration say is that there is no recommendation to reopen Oak Park. And I know that a big part of this due to other factors, put it on the agenda, but unless there's direction from the board, right, to, for you and your team to spend more time, more resources, resources, doing the research to, to look into Oak Park, a recommendation you're not bringing to the board at this time, that I think, and that I think is to the board. So is the board saying that they want to direct administration to, to open Oak Park? Because that's not what I've, what I've heard.
Director Stivlin?
Thank you for asking that question, because that relates directly to the comment I was just going to make. I, I think all of these comments from over here and from, from everyone at this table, it's very interesting, lots of issues. I think we need to continue having this conversation with the goal of having a decision on Brookview by, say, December. And I think right now, what I would like to do is just make it very clear, I would like to have a motion that we are not going to be moving the, our administrative offices at this time. So that's not saying it couldn't happen, but I do think we need to give ourselves more time to really take the, to really consider all the different components and, and have the conversation together as a board. And yeah, get some of the information that we need, let's dig into this a little bit more.
So where I'm at is to make a motion is to kind of end the discussion, and I think, I oppose that, because I think we do need to continue to have more discussion. So that would be at the next meeting to have further discussion.
If I have a motion and we have a second, then we can continue talking about the motion.
At continued, so what, so what is your motion?
My motion is that we put a moratorium on any moves from administration into Oak Park at this time.
And I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Well, what's the, when you put a moratorium on, it's usually for two weeks or for a month or, do you, is there a, is there a time certain that we will discuss doing that?
Yes, I, well, at least, what I was thinking is that we would take the time between now and when we have to make a decision about Brookview, to decide what is going to happen with all of these buildings, really. With, you know, let's look at it all, let's bring it all out.
I think it'll take longer than that. What might ease your mind is we have no intention of moving. You know, you're having this conversation, we've stopped everything, we have our transitions program over there, where we haven't, you know, we aren't in a position where we have to do anything. I've, I've shared with you that the moving over, we're doing, planning on doing minimal things to five classrooms, none of those happened. So if you want the moratorium or whatever, you can do that, but we really, instead of putting a time limit on it, when you're ready, we'll move. There's nothing on our end that we're anxious to do that or need to do that. We were just trying to get ready for the move that we thought was well documented throughout the past several years, so.
Further discussion?
What?
Is this, what, what about the school board leaving here and going to Oak Park? Is that part of your discussion or part of the moratorium? I mean, I think we all toured and saw...
I think moving central is what your motion was, correct?
So that doesn't include moving the board?
Correct.
Totally separate issue.
Board meetings is what you're saying.
Board meetings.
Right.
So moving board meetings is not part of your motion?
That's correct.
Okay. Director Pearson?
Denise, can you just comment on, for the community, what the city talked to you about as far as Oak Park and what we may need to do there?
All right, so Bill, as I shared with the board, Bill Turnblad is the city planner, and he called, and we had a conversation, and he said it is zoned, single-family residential and educational. But if there are more than, or up to 50% of offices where people are going to be officing out of there, we should consider changing it to public administration. And the city of Stillwater, and I see Mayor Kozlowski is here right now, they're undergoing the comprehensive plan right now, so we could go through that process. And what that really means is that that building can be multiple things. Right now, when it's zoned, educational and residential, it's more limiting. So they offered to, they shared the forms with us and laid out a timeline and what that would look like, and...
So is it a recommendation or a requirement that we would have to do that before considering moving offices there?
Well, I think it was his recommendation that we look at that. You know, if we aren't going to be moving there, then it doesn't matter at all. So it's really what your decision is, then we would, we're waiting for the decision. If you decide that you don't want Central Services there and we stay where we are, then there's really probably not a need to do that right now. Thank you.
Just a clarifying question, so with regards to your moratorium, what is the, what is the time, again, like how, how long do you want this moratorium to last?
I guess, I guess to clarify, I just want to, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear, that we're not moving administration offices into Oak Park until we have decided as a board, based on lots of information and conversation, what we're doing with our buildings. And I don't know, we could be more specific than that if you want.
Yeah.
I, I think we need more information and a better process.
Yeah. I, I think, to the superintendent's point, I think, I, I trust your goodwill, that if it's not going to happen, unless this board approves it, I, I think I would recommend that we reconsider the motion in the second, because I don't feel we have to do that. I think the superintendent has come out and, and shared their intentions and what they're not going to do, and, and I trust that. But I, at the same time, with what you're saying, Sarah, I agree with the idea that we'll trust that, and it doesn't have to be required, because ultimately, that decision, I believe, is a board decision.
I agree. Can I respond?
Yes, but then, then we are following policy, and Director O'Loughlin had her hand up, so I'm going to let you go, but I'm, I would like to ask that we follow our protocol.
Okay. Go ahead, you can, you can go ahead.
Director O'Loughlin?
So if you could just, Director Stivlin, just kind of lay out the rationale, please, so of, of the benefits of the moratorium to, to the, to the public, not so much for us that we might, you know, be, feel more reassured, but what, what is the benefit then to the administration, the public, our students, for, especially for administration, to be able to keep doing their work in terms of guiding the, the direction forward as we evaluate the comprehensive plan of all of our buildings?
Well, first of all, I think, this is news to me that we're not moving. I, I don't think I knew that. I, I, I know that a newsletter went out to all staff saying that administration will be moving starting in October, and I think that's where this conversation began. I was surprised by that, because it hadn't come before the board and because we hadn't had any conversation about it. That's all I wanted from the very beginning, was just to be able to have a board conversation and make a motion and vote on it, so that we all know what we're doing, we're all on the same page, and so the community can know what's going on too. And so that really is truly, I think, where this whole thing started. I, I'm not sure if I understand the rest of your question, Director O'Loughlin, as far as directing what we go, do going forward. I just, for me, the decision to move administration into Oak Park is a big deal, and we need to follow a process where we all understand all the components before we vote and make a decision and, and move forward. I think the same is true for adding on to Brookview. The same is true for any other just, this big decisions that we would make regarding, you know, assets that belong to the community. I mean, we need to bring the community along with us, and we all need to be on the same page, so we understand why we're doing the things we're doing and why it's beneficial to our students.
Director O'Loughlin?
So I, I know you keep saying that, that this came to a surprise to you in the superintendent's letter, that that was the first that you'd heard of it, and yet we have substantial evidence to the contrary, that the board has known about this for a number of years. Now granted, some of that might have been before your, your tenure, but that, that's simply not true. So that's where I'm struggling, when I keep hearing, we, we have never heard of this. That, and until now, until, you know, the, the news outlet decided to cover the story, none of us has brought it up as a question to the administrated, administration to, to explore at a learning session. So I'm just really struggling why, and I, I take issue with that, that assertion that we had no idea that this was coming.
All right, Director Pearson?
It's a long day.
I know. Um, so I would say maybe for clarification purpose, because I think Director Stivlin said it, and I think it's how I felt, I was waiting for a board discussion to happen. And so I think what was a surprise was that it was being planned to happen in the immediate future. And so I, I had concerns, but I thought it would come to us as a board, so that we could talk about it at the board table. And so that's where I was surprised when I read it in the staff email that it was going to be happening. And it, I can understand how people just thought it was a done deal and what was going to happen. In my mind, I thought it was going to come to us as a board.
So I'm, I'm just going to interject for a sec. I, I, I'm not, I'm not with you on that. I, it came to a surprise to me only in that I thought, oh, that's right, we are doing this, and I, I was, I, I'm not on the same board with that, because I do remember this being talked about for a long time. That being said, Director Stivlin, would you consider amending your motion to, I, I feel like I hear what you're saying, but possibly amending your motion to table the discussion, table the consideration of, of staff moving over to Oak Park until we have had further conversation with financial implications that are directly related to this, as well as the, the zoning discussion and a variety of different things. So I guess what I'm asking, as opposed to the moratorium, would you consider just a friendly amendment to table this for now until we have some of these issues vetted out and discussed again at the board table?
Yes. I mean, we've heard from the superintendent that there are no plans to move over there at this time, there are obviously some, some barriers that we need to figure out. I, I would be fine with amending that. One thing I would like to add is, I, I do want to make sure we get, get the situation right for the transitions program, and make sure we think about that as part of this conversation, as well as the ALC, which I know is also being considered and studied at this time, as well as, right now, I think we have our YCAP happening there, and so those are all also components of this conversation. So yeah, I think there's just a lot there.
Okay.
I think fine tabling, tabling this until we have more information.
Wonderful. The second, who made the second?
I did. I'll still second.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else, or have we, are we done, we're falling asleep, or are we not?
A little bit of both. What I would like, and I thought, what I heard earlier too, is whatever questions are out there that are lingering, I know Bob talked about the idea that this was a boundary issue. Another proposal that some others have, have said to me of what you could do with Oak Park is a later start. It doesn't have to be that you require boundaries to move as much as you make it a choice location. Now, I'm not saying that's the best answer, but those are the questions when we say, okay, let's research, let's consider, let's put some notions out there. That's one that I'd like to say too, because there are people, if I, if these were my kids who got moved and it was a year later, what I, what's very important to kids and families is stability. What's more important to some is logistics. If it starts later and that fits into their schedule, they may be attracted. If I live across from Oak Park or four blocks away, and I say there's a possibility that they could reopen, then I might be interested. Now, that doesn't solve all of the issues, but I'm saying it gives some different options that I think you're looking at and talking about.
All right, thank you. I think we, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
This is the tabling?
I'm sorry, this is the votes to table.
Yes, could we have a reading of the motion and what the motion is, please?
Okay, so the initial motion was a tabling of the discussion to move administration into, into central, or, pardon, excuse me, into Oak Park until the time with which we have more discussion on the financial implications around the move. So we've got, we have, and, okay, that's fine. Put, put the demographics in there as well. So that was the motion and the second.
And is there in there, I thought it was your intent to have a board decision on that?
Excuse me?
A board decision and ultimately what you were going to do or not do?
Well, my original motion was to put a moratorium, at least a temporary stop to all plans to move our administrative offices into Oak Park. Then I was asked to amend it so that we would just table this discussion, so no changes will happen until the board makes a decision about all of, you know...
And we, and we will have, and we will have more discussion, and we will all be asking questions and bring them to the table.
Or submit them.
Bring them to me, and we will direct staff to answer, to be prepared to answer those questions, so we can continue to have a rich discussion. Director O'Loughlin?
So I just want to clarify though, does this tabling preclude us to, and preclude the administration to be looking at expanding Brookview? Because I feel like that is something that we have a really sensitive timeline on. So I'm just, I want to make sure that we're not tabling everything we've talked about, because we've talked about a lot, we've covered a lot of ground. So I want to be really clear about what Director Stivlin's motion is isolating, so that we don't paint ourselves into a corner and bound you by any artificial deadlines that are going to subsequently potentially really affect our district.
Chair Palatier, can you just read the motion one more time?
So this is a motion that is just in my brain, so let's try to, hopefully I get this right. The motion and the second was to table, to table the action item, the discussion, to move, simply to move administration into Oak Park Heights until we have more financial conversations regarding this topic. That was the motion and the second. It was not... It was not, it was, my interpretation of Director Stivlin's motion had nothing to do with, with Brookview. I take that as a, as a completely separate item. Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hands, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Good job.
Are we finished? All right, thank you. We, we are skipping the action items tonight, moving on to board member reports, board chair report. I have just a very quick one, I could say more, but I won't. I, I had the opportunity, I, I'm part of the Anderson, the CAC committee, and it's a community engagement group, and I just wanted to commend the city of Bayport, because they have noticed that there's been a lot of increased traffic along, along that stretch of road. They've been very concerned about it, and they are working with, so the city and MINDOT and the county are all kind of working together on some remedial measures to, to address safety, because we've got kids at Anderson that cross the road and, and attend, yeah, so you're here, so, yes. So, I, I just, I wanted to bring that up, I was really pleased to hear that, that they are, they're really addressing that, because they're noticing some increased traffic along that road, and I notice it as well. And we have our, our little bugaboos crossing that road, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a concern. So, I just wanted to raise that, I was really, really pleased to hear that. So, that's actually all I have. Board member reports, let's start with Mr. Havelin. Would you like to make your first report, or are you ready to call it a day, or?
What would you like me to report? It's the stuff about going to visit, like-
We, I, I would do that, yeah. The, you, you've made some phenomenal, I've learned so much from you, so just quickly, Don and I have, we've gone on some of the tours together, and I've learned a lot, not only from our principals and from the schools, but boy, have I learned a lot from Mr. Havelin, and I just have the most utmost respect for this man, so that's one thing that you've been very busy doing on tours, so you, maybe you want to speak to that a little bit.
Well, I think, I think it's really important for, for me, to, to visit every school and, and talk to the principal, and if, I'm running into a lot of teachers that I used to work with, had was privileged to work with, but you learn more about what's happening that it really, really makes a difference for students. And so, I, I'm going to finish, I've got five elementary schools left to visit, but they're just, just tremendous examples. You know, Mark over there, that the school that he's the principal of is just fantastic, and the programs that, that the junior, two middle schools and the high school have, they just didn't even think about having those 20 years ago. And so, I think that the, the chemistry between teachers and students, and between teachers and the administration, you can just feel it, that they really like what they do, and they're really concerned about students. I think that, for me, I really needed to go to visit schools, because my frame of reference was Stillwater Junior High, where I spent 26 years. And I, I think it's important to see the changes and what would happen if, if they weren't able to make those changes. So, you know, I said it before tonight, but it all comes down to teachers and students, and anything that we do as a board that, that makes it more difficult for them to do their job, then we're not doing our job. And I'm going to be a teacher advocate and a student advocate, as long as I'm on the board. I think that the, the effect that teachers have on students and their future, you can't even measure it. And George, here, he, my, my son thinks he's the best teacher that he ever had, and he was a tremendous English teacher, and I know he's been a good board member, but I think that the impact that teachers have on students is lifelong. The reason I went into education, was the teacher convinced me that I should do that. And it was difficult for me, because my first language was Norwegian, I couldn't speak English. And they didn't have ESL programs in one-room country schools. So, you learn by association. Again, I learned from teachers how important it is that they, that they be supportive.
Well said, thank you. Director Heppner?
Just a reminder to board members, on Wednesday, October 10th, at 6:30, it kind of ties to our last open forum speaker, there's a representative from Sandy Hook Promise, which is a national nonprofit organization focused on preventing gun violence and other forms of victimization through mental health and wellness programs developed for various school-aged children. A representative by the name of Dana Montgomery will provide an overview of their programs, which are available at no cost to schools which choose to implement them, and that's at the White Bear Lake Unitarian Universalist Church in Montomede, October 10th at 6:30, it's a Wednesday.
Thank you. Director Stivlin?
I just wanted to let you guys know, I am going to the MSBA Phase III workshop tomorrow, which is called Building a High Performance School Board Team, as well as Phase IV, which is Effective Community Engagement.
Good.
And I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Director O'Loughlin?
On August 28th, I attended a partnership plan board meeting. They have a few new members who they've welcomed, welcomed recently, and it's great to, to hear they're planning for the school year ahead, and they've already given out some new grants, which is wonderful. And on October 30th, the partnership plan will be doing an evening retreat as they embark upon a new strategic plan with that new board, so exciting things ahead for the foundation there. I just want to echo what a lot of people have said to our, our staff, I think that even as a parent, when you think about going back to school for the first day and getting your own student, your own children, children ready, and all the logistics that, that go into that, and sometimes the stress that can accompany that, you know, being really mindful that we have a staff that's trying to do that for 8,300 students, almost 8,400 students, many of them who are parents themselves and miss out on their own children's events. So, I just really want to thank all of our principals, all of our teachers, all of our staff, and Superintendent Contrali and her team, because it does not go unnoticed, the amount of time and energy and the blood, sweat and tears that you invest to make sure that, that the first day goes extraordinarily well, as well as it has. The last thing I just want to mention that many of you know, September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. I lost, lost a grandfather to suicide, and I just want to make sure that always on our mind, we're, we're talking about mental illness, we're helping to de-stigmatize when we need to ask for help, and we, we need to get help on behalf of our loved ones. So, many of you are also familiar with NAMI, which is a national alliance on mental illness. They have a fabulous chapter here in the cities, and if you or someone you love needs help or just needs some support, you can text NAMI, it's N-A-M-I, to 741-741. And I just really want to encourage all of us that we take care of one, one another, and just wanted to, to highlight that.
Thank you. Director Pearson?
Thank you. Just very quickly, I attended the Community Education Advisory Committee meeting on Tuesday, and Community Ed is just humming along, they had a really good year, they have a healthy fund balance, the PAC was better than they anticipated, all the memberships there, and so, they're really in a good place and working, always working to do more classes and get more stuff going on, and just huge thank you to them and all they did over the summer, which was a lot, and all that they keep doing for our community.
Thank you, Shelley. Director Potajek?
Couple things. Number one, I'm not going to say much about 916, only in the interest of time.
Really?
But there is one thing I want to make sure everybody knows, is they have a foundation. Gary Benson is the past president, he's also Kraus Anderson. But anyway, last year, they raised over $90,000, and they do a lot of things similar to what our partnership plan does for us locally, but also what they do is they give scholarships to students. And last year, our students got a couple thousand dollars worth of, of scholarships, actually more than that, there were something like four or five students who received those. To be eligible for those, all districts have to join, and the charge to districts is $250. So, it's a small investment, but I'm saying the returns are great, so you can overlook that sort of thing, and Denise has been very supportive of that, and I thank you on that. Also, I'm going to talk a little bit about legislatively, because there are about four or five events that are coming up that help us shape our position on legislation. Apart from legislation, and the chair is going to thank me for doing this, the world's best workforce has their first meeting on Tuesday, and that's at 7:00.
That's in working group reports.
Okay, all right. MSBA has an advocacy meeting, and actually, for our district, that was tonight in St. Paul. We couldn't do it, so we chose the next best, and some of us are going on the 19th, which is a Wednesday, down to St. Peter. Now, what they do is talk about what happened at the legislature last year and with the governor, and what didn't. And so, if anybody's interested, let us know. If we get over four board members, it becomes an open meeting thing, so please, if you intend on going, let Barbara know. It was interesting, because I got contacted by Montomede, they do the same thing we do, their meetings are on Thursday night, and the representative for our areas is Lucy Payne, and Lucy wrote me and said, she brought up the complaint, because there was a clash, and she said, as far as MSBA is, most boards hold their meetings on Tuesdays.
Oh, jeez.
So, that's going to complicate it for you. But anyway, they, they made carpool with us in going there. On the 21st, C has their meeting, and similar to AMSD, last Friday, Bill Morris is going to be presenting, and his is called Public Perceptions in This Turbulent Time. And I would say, whether it's AMSD or C, superintendents, board members turn out big to hear Morris. He generally knows what he's talking about. The other thing C is doing at their meeting on the 21st, anybody can go and attend, is Senator Pratt is going to talk about, and you love the title, containing the cost of special education services, because we're advocating for more funding, not that we don't like efficiencies, that we do. And following up, Senator Pratt's second meeting, monthly meetings they are, is being held at 9:00 a.m. on the 25th, it's a Tuesday, and that's in the Senate Building, and it's open to anybody who wants to go and listen to those presentations. And then, that's it pretty much, I, I think I'll end there.
All right, thank you. Director, you know what, Director Potajek, the, what you brought up with the Pratt's, no, the Pratt's, is that, is that going to be streamed? Because I really appreciated you letting me know that. I did stream that, it was, was honestly very interesting. If people cannot attend those meetings, it is available for streaming, so.
Yeah, I would suspect it is. You can probably go to the Senate Building or the committees, whatever.
Okay.
And they'll acknowledge, who's a good reminder that lets us know on that, is Scott Krumquist at AMSD. He's wonderful in, in giving you the link, he, he takes all the hard parts out of it, that's why I'm able to do it.
Great, that's great, thank you so much. Working group reports.
Our working group continues to work. Thank you for agreeing to the 300s tonight on the consent agenda. We had an initial discussion on student attendance policy with John Perry, we had an initial discussion on the discipline policy with Bob McDowell, and both of them suggested that next spring, that those policies should probably be revisited, rather than wait until the fall of the year to do it in the spring of the year, so new information can get put into the handbook. We also had a discussion about the issue with the legislator letters, and we found out that we did indeed follow policy. Our policy says we do not give out addresses, we would have to include that in a policy. It is not automatic that those addresses go out. So, we'll continue to talk about that and bring you something down the road, and the 400s will be our next area to be reviewed, and we need to get together before we leave today and set a date for our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Community engagement, that was pretty much what I was going to say, there, the, the group is meeting on September 15th, and-
It's the 18th.
Yep, the 18th. And, yeah, I'm, again, I just remain really excited to see what they're going to come up with, so. That's actually all I have for right now. Finance, finance, finance.
We're always the last, but we're mighty. So, the finance working group will be meeting with Director Holheisel on Wednesday, October 3rd, and-
Oh.
We'll be reporting out after, after that, and as Chair Pelletier indicated, I believe, at the next board meeting, we will have a rather in-depth, comprehensive conversation about where we stand monetarily.
All right. I want to just take a minute and thank the board for this was a tough discussion, and we came out of it, we came out of it okay, and I think, I think we're better for it. So, thank you all for that discussion, I sincerely appreciate it. This meeting is adjourned.